Oh, no, really?
For business, or?
My in-laws go down there for like two months.
How are you, John?
All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. It's Bridgewater Township Zoning Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting for Tuesday, February 11, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. Adequate notice this meeting was provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6, specifically on January 15, 2025. Proper notice was sent to the Courier News and the Star Ledger and filed with the clerk at the Township of Bridgewater and posted on the municipal bulletin board. Please be aware of the zoning board of adjustment policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 PM and no new testimony will be taken after 10:00 PM. If you're able, please rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi there. Kevin, can we get a roll call, please? Here? Mr. Waideli?
I hear.
Yes?
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Fresco?
Here.
Mr. Bonjorno?
Here.
Mr. Gieske?
Here.
Mr. Seacat?
Here.
Mr. Kulak?
Here.
Mr. Vesio?
Here.
Mr. Gabbit?
Here.
Thank you very much. We have our board professionals here and we have Board Attorney Aller here as well. Great. At this point, I'm gonna open up meeting to members of the public that would like to speak on any land use issue that is not on our agenda this evening. If you'd like to come speak, just come up and give us your name and address, please. All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close that portion of the meeting. And we're gonna go on to minutes, which we have none. We have one resolution. That's the Kravitz Resolution, 1823 Middle Road. Looking for changes or comments, please. No comments? All right. Have a motion, please, of Mr. Widely? Second it. Thank you, Mrs. Amin. We just need a roll call vote, Kevin. Who made the motion? Mr. Widely.
Yes.
Mr. Waideli?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Amin?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjorno?
Yes.
Mr. Gieske?
Yes.
Mr. Seacat?
Yes.
Mr. Kulak?
Yes.
Mr. Vesio?
Um, do you need my vote on this?
We don't leave his vote. We're good. You can vote if you want, though, Mr. Vesio.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, all right. All right, next up, we have, let's do an update to our docket. Rich, if you can take us through real quick, please?
Sure.
Please, yep.
So the first matter on our agenda this evening is the Rockland APV Bridgewater Energy LLC application for property at 760 East Main Street. That application is not being heard this evening. It is being carried to April 22 at 7:00 PM in this room. There'll be no further notices from the applicant. So if there's anyone in the audience this evening for that application, it is now going to be heard April 22 without further notice. We have Visions and Pathways will be heard this evening. We have several other matters that are on our schedule, which are 821 Bridgewater LLC and the Jewish Community Center. That is on for hearing on February 25. The St. Bernard Church is on for February 25 as well. Bridgewater Realty, which is the Starbucks application, is on for March 11, as is Belly Holdings, also March 11, and 1200 Route 22 Land Investors and 1200 Route 22 LLC Holding. That matter is scheduled now for hearing on March 25. Bridgewater Self-Storage is now scheduled for a hearing also on March 25, as is German Oil LLC, again, March 25. And we are also continuing with Paul Miller Auto Group on April 8. And there's no further notice from Paul Miller. The others will be on separate notice.
All right, great. Thank you, Rich. So with that, let's dig into 8 Third Avenue Visions and Pathways.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Stephen Hale, representing the applicant Vision and Pathways. I'd like to thank the Board and the Board Professionals and the public for their time in hearing us this evening. We're excited to be here for, again, an exciting project for Bridgewater. Visions and Pathways already has a presence in Bridgewater and it's gentleman to my left, David, will explain a lot more about what Visions and Pathways is. I'm sure some of you know already. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And this site will be used for the purpose of providing permanent housing for displaced youth over the age of 18. David will explain in more detail. There's a lot of controls related to that, but he'll touch on that. We're looking to construct 10 studio apartments to accommodate the individuals and who have basically aged out of foster care. We're gonna have on the ground floor, two offices, a conference room, laundry room, kitchenette, activity room. And the first floor will also have four studio apartments and a second floor with six studio apartments. We will explain and touch on any relief being sought. This use, and we'll have testimonies in inherently beneficial use. However, it is not technically permitted in the zone and therefore we need the D1 use variance and we will have planning testimony to address that. And then there are some bulk variances that our site engineer will take us through. So with that being said, and again, we appreciate, we did get the reports from your board professionals. They issued a joint report. We're prepared to address all of those. And Nancy is great about getting them to us well in advance of the hearing, so we're prepared for that, so.
Mr. Hale, why don't we just check notice and we'll swear everybody in and then you can bring your first witness up?
Sure.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I did review the notice. It's in proper form. Certified mail to the 200-foot list on January 27, published on January 31, so the Board has jurisdiction. And why don't we swear in all of your witnesses at once, so they can jump in? If you would stand, please, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you'll give to this Board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. And my left to right, if you would just, all your names for the record, please. And spell your last name, please. Thank you. Great, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, Mr. Walker, you've been sworn now, so if you could take the Board through a little bit about your position. Tell them about Visions and Pathways and then focus on what's proposed for the site. You realize the site engineer and architect are here, but the background would be helpful.
Great, great. And once again, this is a real, a very exciting project for Visions and Pathways. We've been in existence for over 54 years and we've been a pillar, a partner with Somerset County and Bridgewater throughout our tenure here in Somerset County and Bridgewater. So this is a very exciting project.
Are you with Visions and Pathways?
Yes, I am the Executive Director of Visions and Pathways.
Your position there?
Executive Director.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have stated that at the outset. I'm the Executive Director of Visions and Pathways. I've been with the organization for over a decade. And once again, it's a remarkable organization that's been in existence for over 54 years. Myself, I'm a retired attorney that went back to social work school. And since going back to social work school, I've been involved with community-based human services for over 30 years. Visions and Pathways, our mission is to help abused, neglected, and missing youth to become self-sufficient. We're the last stop before our young adults are expected to become, live alone as adults. The Bridge House project will be 10 units, efficiency units, of independent housing, affordable housing for youth who have aged out of foster care. All of our youth at Visions and Pathways go through our Prosperity Independent Living Skills Program. What Prosperity does is it teaches our young adults life skills, job search, how to be a responsible tenant, how to be a responsible member of the community. So before our young adults move into Bridge House, they will have gone through our Prosperity Independent Living Skills Program. And we will be assured that they will be contributing members to this community. They'll be so proud of. That was good. Claiming my throat was good. So Prosperity is a core component of this program. So the young adults who will be residing at Bridge House will have gone through our Prosperity Independent Living Skills Program. So will be assured that they have the life skills to be contributing members of our community. It will be affordable housing. So each one of the residents, 10 residents, will pay 30% of their income towards the rent. The rent will be subsidized through public sources. The sources that we have already obtained for this project are all for affordable housing. We're committed to providing affordable housing in this project. We manage, own and manage six properties in.
I have a question. How are the how are the candidates selected to live in the house?
Yeah, there will be a screening process and there will be a lottery process. But our funding sources have restricted it to youth who have aged out of foster care. So that limits the pool significantly. So through Visions and Pathways and our partners within the service community, we will identify youth who have aged out of foster care, who are ready to live independently in the studio apartments.
Thank you.
13 years ago, I don't know if it was you or somebody else, was in front of this Board asking for variances related to what at that point was called a group home. Those variances were granted.
Yes.
Since then, nothing's happened.
Yes.
Are you the same applicant that we listened to 12 or 13 years ago?
Different, Executive Director, changed organization. Over the course of the last 13 years, we have strengthened the organization in many ways. One of the ways that we have strengthened organizations is through our Prosperity Independent Living Skills Program.
So it's the same organization, you're different, however.
We're different, very different.
Why has nothing happened?
Funding.
The last 13 years?
Funding in our capacity to ensure that the program that we bring to you is strong, that we can provide the support that these young folks need to be contributing members of our community. So over the course of years, we have obtained the funding necessary to move the project forward and we have built the infrastructure within the organization to make sure that every one of the young adults who reside in Bridge House will be prepared for independent living, move on in their careers, move on in their personal lives, and be contributing members to our community.
So the funding and the infrastructure are in place today?
That's correct.
Were they in place 13 years ago?
They were not.
Why did you come here 13 years ago if you weren't ready to do something? And how do we know that's any different today?
I cannot speak to what occurred 13 years ago. I was not the Executive Director at that time. But they were in the process of attracting the funding. Many things have changed over the course of the last 13 years. For example, the support for affordable housing is more plentiful. Not enough, you all know that there's a dearth of affordable housing within the state, within the nation. But funding for affordable housing is far more plentiful now than 13 years ago, than 10 years ago. So that's one of the major changes. And within Visions and Pathways, within our infrastructure, our ability to make sure that anyone who moves into Bridge House will be ready for independent living has strengthened tremendously over the course of the last decade.
So if you get the variances you're here applying for tonight, when will we see something happen on this lot?
We're as anxious as you are to make something happen on this lot.
Well, that doesn't help me because I think you were very anxious. Somebody was very anxious 13 years ago. But that translated into no action whatsoever. How can we feel comfortable that you're not wasting our time again? That you're actually gonna go ahead and build this house?
We have a remarkable team in place. We have Panoni Engineers, we have Buckner Architects. We are partnering with Monarch Housing Associates, which is the premier organization within affordable housing and within the state of New Jersey. And we have secured adequate funding to move forward. There is a small gap between what we secure through public funding and what needs to move, to complete the project. Securing these approvals will move us forward in securing the additional funding necessary. So in order to pull down the funds that we have, for which we have commitments, we need these approvals. So we want this to happen. Our, our community, meaning the human service community, that wants to ensure that youth who age out of foster care have a safe, stable, supportive environment to move forward. We are anxious and ready to move forward with this project.
Maybe you could identify for Mr. Williams, obviously asking questions, the funding, the type of funding that you have. And maybe, I know you have group homes in the area. Differentiate the difference in what's being proposed here with the independent living as opposed to the group home. And, and again, identify the funding.
Yeah, our primary funding source is through the county, through the County Department of Human Services. A $1.4 million grant towards this project. So that's a major source of support for restricted to affordable housing. We also have funding through foundations and charitable contributions that amount to another $400,000. So through the county funding and the foundation and charitable contributions, we have closer $2 million moving towards this project. What was the other question?
The other was differentiating. We were here, none of this team.
Right.
For a group home, I know you have group homes in the area. The difference between the traditional group home and what's being proposed here?
Yeah, we have four, four group homes within Bridgewater. Two of them are within walking distance from Bridge House. The difference between the group homes and the Bridge House project, as we call it, is the level of self-sufficiency that the residents will have in Bridge House. In the group home, we're preparing the young folks who are about to age out of foster care to live on their own, become self-sufficient. In Bridge House, they would have achieved a high enough level of self-sufficiency to live independently in the apartment. However, there will be close monitoring through our Prosperity Independent Living Skills Program. There will be security cameras 24/7. And through the staffing at the group homes, one block away to the east, one block away to the west. Or is it north and south? North and south. There will be staffing 24/7 to provide support for the young folks at Bridge House. So changes of funding, strengthening in terms of the program, ready to move forward.
So you mentioned two other group homes, or whatever you call them, at this point. Are they the two buildings on Fourth Avenue?
There's one on Fourth Avenue, which we call Passages. There's another on Third Avenue, which we call My Place. My Place is a five-bedroom group home. Passages is a 12-bed group home. In addition to the group home at Passages, there's administrative offices where we have our case managers. My office is actually on the Fourth Avenue site, as well as other support services. So the support services for Bridge House will be right across the street at Fourth Avenue. There will be additional staff support on Third Avenue in the group home. So the individuals living in Bridge House will be capable of independent living. Affordable housing, they will contribute 30% of their income towards the rent. They'll be ready to move on in their lives and this will be a major stepping stone for them. Thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Sweeney was talking about the application. Actually, it was in 2012. That's when you people came before our Board. And at that time, you didn't have the funding or you didn't did you get the state funding for afterwards, after that 2012?
Yes, the funding that I described, we obtained within the last two years. So the funding that I described to move forward with the construction of this project was not secured at that point in time. When I started a little over a decade ago, that was the major hurdle for moving this project forward. They had come before this Board, had received their approvals, but they did not have the funding to move forward. Major difference. Also, once again, the support services that are very strong at this point in time. We have a remarkable behavioral health staff. Those did not exist in this form a decade ago.
I have a follow-up question. Does the state fund the entire project or do you have to get a loan?
And actually, I should, I must have misspoke. It's funding through the county, not through the state. The other independent funding is through foundations and individual contributions. We actually have some of our donors here tonight, bringing us on. So it's through the county funding that is a pass-through from federal allocations. Did I answer your question?
The state gives you only a certain amount and then the remaining you will be funding?
Yes. The, the government funding that we have currently, there is a gap. But we will be able to access, for example, Affordable Housing Trust Fund support. This is a very attractive project for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund after we move forward in the next step in the approval process. So this is a major linchpin in pulling down other funding, government as well as private contributions.
So for your operating expenses, do you charge the people who use the space or how does?
Yes, it's affordable housing. And so in order to be a tenant at Bridge House, they will have to be employed. And we will charge rent 30% of their income. And that is the concept, that you have someone, perhaps their first job, perhaps working two jobs, more often not working two jobs. Having affordable housing is clearly important for them to be able to move on in their careers in advance. So studio apartment, one person in each apartment. They get their, stabilize their lives, save. As part of Prosperity, we expect each individual to save 30% of their income. And then after they save, have stability in terms of employment, they can move on and move out of Bridge House. We anticipate that each resident will be in the tenant, each tenant will be in Bridge House for approximately two years. So you have stability, not a high level of turnover, but you also will have some progress in that these young folks will get that foundation that they need to move on in their lives.
So if I remember correctly, way back when I was reading something, the affordable housing that can be, the township can use that as the count of number of housing that's required?
Yes, yes. This is a project that will meet towards the municipality's obligation, affordable housing obligation. So it's a win-win. It's a win for the young adults who will be the tenants at Bridge House. It's a win for Bridgewater and it helps meet the affordable housing obligation.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yeah, I have a few questions for clarity, actually. When you're talking about, you're a nonprofit. So you said that you have the grant money ready to go to build this project, correct?
Excuse me, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I'm correct on that end. Now, the next step is the 10 tenants there in the 10 studio apartments, or whatever you want to call them, rooms, they pay 30% of their income to your group?
That is correct.
Now, my question is, if that's not enough to cover the overall operation, who is your nonprofit, then where does the rest of the money come from?
Yeah, that's one, actually, one of the benefits of being a nonprofit, that we can attract foundation support and other public monies to cover any sort of gap.
Such as?
Such as Department of Children's and Families, Department of Community Affairs. Actually, Bridgewater has a program, Community Development Block Grant. So through local, state, and federal funding, we can cover any gap between what is being paid by the tenants and our need for ongoing upkeep. That's one of the benefits of being a nonprofit. A for-profit would have to depend entirely on the tenant's income for ongoing operations. That is not the case with us.
So you're able to use all the government resources, cause your status, to be able to fund any gap between the income from your tenants and the gap of what you need to operate?
Exactly.
Okay.
You think better than I do. Thank you.
Thank you. So my next question is, now you have two group homes right in the same area, which you have an office in?
Yes.
Can you go over again what your definition of a group home is?
Our definition of a group home is, one, the residents do not pay rent. Our funding is exclusively from public sources. For example, with the Passages group home, that's the building on Fourth Avenue, it's fully funded through the Department of Children and Families, either through a grant or per diem payments. There is a age limit on the residence, resident as compared to a tenant, the resident's ability to stay there. So in our group homes, they age out at 21. And that's one of the challenges that we have right now, that we work with a young person for approximately a year, help them attain the skills to be self-sufficient. They cannot live with us beyond age 21 and there's no availability of affordable housing. So that's one of the major differences. With group home, age out. Affordable housing, there's no aging out. And you pay rent.
Okay, is that also considered a nonprofit, then, that part of it too?
Yes, all the programs that we provide are nonprofit.
Okay, so in your group homes, then, they're there basically for a year or less, maximum age 21?
Yes. At the group homes, Passages, My Place. At the group homes, Passages, My Place, excuse me, and Whitney House. At those three group homes, yes, they age out at 21. We also have another home called Brahma House, and that's our largest facility, actually. And that's for youth age, up to age 17, 13 to 17. So once again, that's one of the major differences between the group homes and the Affordable Housing Program. With the group homes, there are age limitations and other restrictions. With the Affordable Housing Program, the Bridge House Project, Bridge House Affordable Housing Complex, there will not be aging out, and the tenants will be working and pay rent.
Okay, thank you. I'll have more questions later, but then...
Mr. Walker, if I might. I think what your response to one of Mr. Waddell's questions was that the residents will pay no rent? But I thought earlier that they...
Well, I apologize, I misspoke. In the group homes, the residents do not pay rent.
What about this?
In Bridge House, the tenants will pay rent, 30% of their income.
Thank you.
I apologize for...
I have a question.
Yes.
This goes to just the daily operation of the house, just curiosity. Does the project provide meals for people, or do they have to do their own shopping and their own cooking?
They have to do their own shopping and cooking, but we do provide support. For example, we have another program called Prosperity Independent Living Skills. Actually, there are two components for prosperity. We work with the kids, young adults in our group homes, as well as young adults in the greater community. With the young adults in the greater community, we help them with shopping and affording food. We also have a condominium, a two-bedroom condominium in Bridgewater. Same thing there, it's independent living, they pay rent, they live on their own. But we do help them, because the cost of food, oh my goodness. But we do help them meet those ongoing expenses. Same thing with transportation. With Bridge House, they will be part of our continuum of services. With Bridge House and other programs, we do provide limited transportation. But we also teach our young adults, once again, self-sufficient, to use public transportation. So luckily, there is a bus route nearby, walking distance for people younger than me. Walking distance from the facility, so they can use public transportation. There's also van services available through Visions and Pathways. So we teach them to cook independently, we help them a little bit. Food is expensive. We teach them to use public transportation, but we also help them save so that they can buy a car. Our experience has been that our youth, young adults, do not purchase a car while they are living with us. Right now, none of the residents in our group homes own a vehicle. What will happen is, as they're about to move out, preparing to move out, that's when they will purchase a vehicle. So we do not anticipate many of the Bridge House tenants will have a vehicle.
So each of the studio apartments, we'll call them, they all have refrigerators and stoves and things like that?
Yes.
And is there a general cleaning service? Or is everybody responsible to clean their room, or their condo, and the rest of the house?
Everyone is responsible for, is it independent living apartment complex, affordable housing complex? So they are expected to maintain the upkeep of their individual apartments. Once again, that's why it's so important that we prepare our young adults for living independently before they move into Bridge House.
These candidates, how do I say this? They are not developmentally challenged?
No, no. They are fully capable of living independently.
Thank you.
I have a question. So you said, these are for individuals that, at the earliest, are out of foster care?
Yes, aging out of foster care.
What age would that be? I'm not clear what that age is.
Typically, a young person ages out at age 21. And that's one of the differences in the system, actually. If we were having this conversation 15 years ago, the age of aging out typically would have been 18. And that's simply too young. 21 is something of a challenge, but that's why we provide such strong support. So yes, 21.
Okay, so minimum, minimum 21?
Yeah, they won't be kids, they'll be young adults.
Okay, is there a maximum age?
No, no. So the goal is, bring the young person in, they will be around 21 years old. Work with them to move on to a higher level of self-sufficiency. Get a better job where they can afford to pay more rent within two years. That has been our experience with the two-bedroom condominium that we own, that two years or less typically is the amount of time that the tenants live in our condominium. So we do have a model, best practice, that we're using to replicate with Bridge House.
Okay, so there, is there a maximum of how many individuals can live in one unit?
Yes, one. They're efficiency apartments, one person.
So no, if any of these individuals have children, or what happens? What's the procedure?
No, no. If, we will help some, if the young person does have a child, we will help them find a more appropriate apartment complex for them. And once again, one of the things that we do, hopefully, the young person, if they conceive, or at a point where they can afford to raise a family. But we do help our young adults learn about entitlement programs, food stamps. There are subsidies for childcare and such. But the model is single adults.
What would be criteria for someone to not qualify or to be involuntarily removed?
Disrupted behavior, non-payment of rent. We do not discharge, we do not evict immediately when someone becomes unemployed. But of course, will have a detrimental impact on their ability to pay rent.
Okay, so it's 30% of rent, and I'm assuming it's based on their income? So that 30% is flexible?
Yes, it's based on their income.
Okay, and is it expected that, we spoke about the group home, that the people from the group home will, this is like the next step for them to move into this unit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One other question. When this is built, you said you have the funding. Is there going to be a mortgage on the property?
A deed restriction. So as part of the public funding that we receive, there's a 30-year commitment for it to be used for affordable housing.
Okay, but will you be paying off the construction and for, out of your funding? Or will there be a mortgage?
The cost for the construction will be covered by our funding, not by a mortgage. So the funding is to cover the construction costs. Did I answer the question?
Yes, it does. So going forward, the operating cost to run the house, what is, what do you anticipate that?
Yeah, the operating cost to run the house, that's part, will be covered in part by 30% paid by the tenants. Subsidies, for example, there's something called wraparound funds for youth who have aged out of foster care. So those wraparound funds will help cover the cost between the rent that we would charge ordinarily and the 30% that the young person is able to pay. Once again, the model being our condominium, where we have residents at our condominium that pay 30% of their income, but through wraparound funds that are available through the Department of Children and Families. The gap is made up by that funding.
Thank you.
Just wanted to follow up on some of the questions that Mr. Seacat asked before. Would your organization be committed to holding the maximum occupants at 10?
Oh, yes, definitely. Definitely. No, no, we, we take great pride in our properties. And we take pride in being contributing neighbor, asset to the Bridgewater community. So no, you're not going to have overcrowding at any of our properties, Bridge House or the group homes.
Okay, what are like visiting rules, you know, typically?
It's independent living. So the rules would be the same as any other apartment complex. However, once again, every one of our tenants will be attached to our Prosperity Independent Living Skills Program or our Transitions Program, depending on where they are, and their stage of self-sufficiency. So they will be expected to maintain their apartment as any other tenant in any other apartment complex.
They had guests one night, let's say, and they go out, and then they, people can sleep over?
It's an apartment.
It's an apartment.
Okay. Now, if this application, let me go back to another question I have. Regarding sort of the, you know, public benefit, you know, as part of the variance application, is in terms of your applicants that would be living here, would there be preference given to foster children that were raised in Bridgewater?
Yes, our funding gives preference to youth who have aged out of foster care and Somerset County residents. After that, it will be open to non-Samerset County residents and young adults who are not aging out of foster care. But unfortunately, there are so many youth who are aging out of foster care in need of housing that we would never have to go beyond that pool. Just within Visions and Pathways alone, looking at the youth who have aged out of our program within the last two years, we could fill those 10 units.
So you mentioned the model. So where else is this happening? Where else are these types of?
Within the state, comparable model is they, through Catholic charities, they have a rental assistance program called My First Home. That's similar to what we're doing, except it's rental assistance, not within a apartment complex in itself. And we also, well, our two-bedroom condominium, that's another model. We have our Village House Program, which is similar to Catholic charities, My First Home Program. And our Village House Program is rental assistance here in Somerset County and Morris County. So the rental assistance programs, sometimes called Scattersite Housing Programs, are comparable models. We're unique in that we will have a small focus setting for the youth who are aged out of foster care. So that's one of the things that's so very exciting about what we're doing, that you're going to have a small affordable housing complex with social services readily available and independent living.
Okay, so if you fast-forward, assume you get this, you're a year from now, ready to go. How many applicants you think you're going to have? 30 for 10, 50 for 10?
It's hard to say, but easily 20 for 10. And the majority of those applicants would be young adults who have been affiliated with Visions and Pathways.
You're doing great work, you know, it's important, and I'm sure we all, this just sounds great. But, you know, I of course have to think that if I'm a neighbor, you know, sudden this 10-unit pops up, and it's for, you know, abused and neglected youth that have aged out of foster care. You know, we all want this, it's great. But if you guys are just coming up with your own model, convince us that, you know, this is safe for the neighbors.
Very much so. So once again, as we discussed...
Protocols in place. And I know you don't have to go back through it. I know you said cameras, I know you said this place you program and all that. But just like, when it comes down to it, I mean, it's going to work?
That's one of the reasons that we took our time. I mean, in all candor, there were two issues. One, funding, but also making sure that we had a strong program. And now we have both. And we did have two meetings with neighbors to discuss this project. There was no opposition to this project from the neighbors. And there was a good turnout from the neighbors. The only issues that we heard from the neighbors were drainage issues that we don't control. So, yeah, we have an excellent relationship with our neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. Mr. Walker, that's a good point. I think what Mr. Fresco is trying to put out our concern from the board is to make sure that the neighbors are on board. And I think that's great testimony you just gave, that you did meet with the neighbors and you did get buy-in. I just want to, you know, reiterate, because we had a lot of questions and there were some repeats. For your funding to be complete, it's predicated on these approvals, correct?
Yes.
And unlike 2012, that you will be fully funded upon those approvals?
Yes.
That's all I want to know. Thank you, and thank you for what you do for our community. It sounds like you've put your life's work into this, and thank you for making our community and our township better. Real quick, could you tell us why you chose Bridgewater and why this exists in Bridgewater? And why, you know, there's a lot of other towns that maybe this could be easier to put in place? Why Bridgewater?
Is that a personal question or Visions and Pathways question?
No, no, it's actually something I probably know the answer to already. I'd like the board to maybe hear this and members of the public to hear, why Bridgewater?
Bridgewater is a remarkable community. For me personally, when I was seeking new employment, I was working for an agency in Morristown for a decade. I wanted to find a community that was welcoming to nonprofits and a nonprofit that was respected within the community. For our young adults, this is fantastic. You have young folks who have experienced tremendous trauma. Our young folks, in order to be in a group home, they have experienced so much hardship. Most kids, similar situated kids, are either living with extended family or in a foster home. Our kids, it hasn't worked for them. What we provide at Visions and Pathways is an opportunity to thrive. So why Bridgewater? But because it's a supportive community and it's an environment in which our young folks can thrive.
Want me to throw it to the board professionals, or do you have more testimony? Well, let's open up the board professionals in case they have any questions. And then we'll open up the members of the public, they can ask questions. And then we'll go to your next witness. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Just a few questions. Are you, you'd mentioned that there's kind of some gap funding or to help with the rental payments for the individuals that wraparound funding from the DCF. Are you a licensed entity, are you licensed with the state? Do you require a license with the state?
Yes. Now, this particular apartment complex will not be a licensed facility. But for our group homes, we are licensed. That's the only way that we could offer, hit the group homes. So we're licensed as a provider for group home services in our group homes. Also, we have a program called Pathways Community Counseling, which is a therapeutic behavioral health program. And there's an additional licensure associated with our behavioral health program. So we're licensed through the group homes and licensed to provide therapy, behavioral health services.
Okay, and so for the individuals who are applying for, you know, these units to you, in order to qualify for any of that wraparound funding, is there any kind of voucher program or anything that they need to do at the state level in order for that to come through?
Yes, they have to have completed an independent living skills program such as Prosperity. So that's another level of assurance. So, what, that's another level of assurance that the young folks who move into, um, Bridge House and will be eligible for wraparound support have succeeded in terms of, uh, an independent living skills program.
Okay. And so, so you, you basically have a captive audience of, of applicants, right? Because they're likely going through your program. They're familiar with your organization already.
Yes, the, the vast majority. I, I, once again, I swore. Um, the vast majority will be graduates from our program. There will be, um, maybe not initially, um, because we have a pool through Visions, Pathways. Right now, we could fill the 10 units. Um, it, at some point, there may be applicants from the larger Department Children and Families, um, community, but once again, they will be rigor, rigor, rigorously screened in the same way as the Visions and Pathways young adults.
I think I raised in my review memo, affordable housing in the context of how it, how it assists the township is a little bit different than just subsidized rents. So, you'd mentioned the deed restriction, which is good. Um, the, the more complicated portion of the affordable housing is that as a group home, each bedroom count, when it's an alternative living arrangement or supportive needs or group home that's licensed through the state, um, those are generally covered by each bedroom counts. Um, and they, they usually have shared kitchens and shared facilities. These studio apartments, or if you looked at this as like 100% affordable multifamily.
Right.
It's a little bit more tricky, and this is why I asked about the licensing through the state, because there are, the uniform housing affordability controls do also regulate bedroom distributions. This, now, you can see waivers for those things. The township can, you know, figure out how their entire bedroom distribution fits out. But I, I was curious if this could be captured as an alternative living arrangement based on the fact that you have a specific population that you're targeting. So, there's kind of a resident preference put in there about who can apply. It's not open to the general lottery, which is how affordable housing otherwise would.
Right.
Apartments would run. So, um, I think we could probably work that out, uh, through this process, uh, you know, through a deed restriction. But I would be, um, I know we keep kind of making this distinction that it's not a group home and that it is affordable housing, but we need to kind of meld the two of those for the purposes of how it qualifies to best benefit the town and be creditworthy through the state regulations.
Maybe Mr. Hale or Mr. Walker can clarify. I, I got the definition of a group home as 18 and under. And, you know, I wanna make sure that when we go and get our, our 10-unit credit upon approval.
Correct.
That, you know, this group home designation doesn't hamper the town's ability to take credit for these 10 affordable housing units. I, I, I think that's something that we can address here as the board, and maybe that's something that in a resolution, I, I'm not really sure how to handle that.
Yeah. I was also going to ask, who's going to qualify the residents? And, because there's something in your application that they would all be very low-income.
Yes.
Residents, right?
Yes.
So, who's, what's the process for qualification then?
And that's, that's part of what my other question was. When, when there's a group home that's licensed through the state, the qualification is basically when the stout, the state approves that resident, offers them a voucher to pay for their, their rent, and then they find tenancy somewhere, wherever a group home that they get selected for. Um, in the case of a general, a multifamily apartment building, there's an administrative agent, the income qualifies, it's a lottery system, which is what I was mentioning before, without the preference, you really, there, there is no allowance to, um, provide preference by location. So, it's, um, throughout the region that they get to qualify. Uh, it can't be just for Bridgewater, it can't be for certain age groups. Um, I think the only preference that's really stipulated is that you can do a veterans preference for some multifamily. But this is why, um, initially, this was approved as a group home. It shows up in our housing element as a group home, which is a little more simple because you don't have to worry about bedroom distribution. You don't have to worry about income qualifying. Like I said, I think, um, we're, we have to walk a fine line between how that is captured in the deed restriction and the ultimate restriction on the unit so that the township can capture them and not get penalized by the state regulate, the state Affordable Housing Regulations and, and for those bedroom distribution, income qualification, all that other stuff.
And Mr. Wa, have you wa, have you worked through that issue yet? And, and who's gonna qualify? Can you walk us through that?
We're working with Monarch Housing, and they are the, the experts in affordable housing. Um, in, in terms of qualifying, my experience is that we do work with the local monitors, but we, um, do the income verification, make sure that meets the, um, definition of low or very low income. And in turn, um, that's the process that, that I've used before.
And Monarch is a highly qualified, they do a lot of 100% affordable development. I don't know if you plan on having them as a witness, as part of your testimony, as part of the application. Um, it may be helpful, um, to help iron that out, because it was, it was a piece of the old approval. It was something that as a part of the original approval, ended up in our thread around housing element as 10 credits, which has now put us on the hook for 10 credits.
I, I'd like at a minimum to see Monarch write something, you know, a qualification letter that, you know, that at least stipulates that this does meet the criteria and we can utilize them as an expert, should there be a problem with the state verification.
I think there's, there's other layers here, not just the income qualifications. The bedroom distribution is, um, uh, there are requirements for that. There's a requirement that if you have studio apartments, that they be offset by two-bedroom apartments, that you have to have no more than 20% one-bedrooms, no more than, oh, you have to have a minimum 20% three-bedrooms. That's obviously not the model here. That's for a typical multifamily inclusionary development.
But we could spend the whole night talking about this.
Oh, absolutely.
So, you know, it doesn't change the fact that it's inherently beneficial use.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't change the fact that this is a, 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 a in-need project, doesn't change the fact that Mr. Walker has two-for-one applications lined up for this. So, I, I think this is something, a- as an applicant, and again, it's your case and you can proceed as you want. It sounds like the planner's asking for some verification from your expert, which is Monarch, and, you know, maybe we can start with a letter addressing some of these concerns, and maybe they can reach out to Catherine directly and, and pen that. You could submit that to the board, and if you think it's necessary, let's get Monarch in to, to testify. But, you know, I'd like to keep the meeting moving and.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to hold it up.
No, no, no.
I think that's, I think that's a great idea. I think if they.
I don't wanna lose what's already in our inventory. This is a 2012 approval, you know, this is a third round approval, so it's in our inventory, is, is Bridgewater Township. You know, to replace those units is, is, is burdensome on, on the township at this point. We don't wanna do that, and we don't wanna hold up your project.
And I'm certain we can get the, the letter from, from Monarch.
That'd be helpful. Uh, I just had a few other questions, more about operations than about affordable housing. Um, so, I noticed that there is, there's the off, in the office space, there is a security office, there's an admin office. Um, could you just describe the staffing and kind of security, uh, like the typical number of employees that are gonna be on site?
Typically, we, we will have at least one employee on site Monday through Friday, um, during work hours. Um, we do have facility staff, um, that, that's available 24/7. So, Monday through Friday during working hours, there will be a staffer present, um, 24/7 availability of facility staff, and that's, um, where the security staff would also be part of.
Um, I know that we've mentioned a few times that these are apartments. I was just curious, based on the security cameras and, um, some of the program intentions, if there were curfews imposed, um, particular.
No, no, i- it's independent living in apartment complex, no, no curfews.
No curfews. Um, I think that's all I have for this witness. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions, Mr. Walker. Um, you had testified that you guys take, um, great pride in, in maintenance of your properties and upkeep of your properties. Just walk the board through how a property like this is maintained, lawn cutting, snow plowing, et cetera.
Yeah, um, we, we contract for, um, lawn care and snow removal. Um, Sacatelli, we, they've worked with us for a number of years. Um, in addition, we do have our maintenance staff to supplement, um, the, the contract with Sacatelli. Um, same thing with, uh, garbage removal. Um, we have a contract for removing trash. Um, so, we have our in-house staff to take care of minor repairs. Um, if it's, uh, snow, not as large as what we're anticipating, but if, if it's a small accumulation, our facilities team can a- address those issues.
And there's some overlap with the maintenance staff with your other facilities? They're, they're familiar with the operation, et cetera?
Very much so.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, we talked a little bit about the age of the tenants, and I recall seeing in some of the application materials that it listed for this property ages 18 to 24 years old. But then, through some of the testimony, I'm understanding that this property would be available to, to prospective tenants starting at 21 years old. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, it would be available for youth who have aged out of foster care, and typically, um, a young person ages out at 21. On the material where it shows, um, 18 through 24, that is referring more than likely, without looking at it, at our Prosperity Independent Living Skills Program in general. Um, our Prosperity Independent Living Skills Program in general works with youth ages 18 through 24.
Okay. So, this facility, youngest you're gonna see are tenants 21 years or older. There though is not a cap of 24 years old. You, you stated, through your experience, the typical tenant would stay likely around two years. So, if they're in that 21-year-old starting point, typically 21 to 24 is the average. Is that, is that a fair?
Correct, that's correct. Yeah.
Okay. Is there, could there be an occasion where somebody would need to stay as a tenant for much longer than that? Have you seen?
In our experience, no. Um, but it's not something that we would exclude. In our experience, um, once again, uh, our tenants stay less than two years.
Okay. Um, last question has to do with parking on the property, and, and the way the project has been laid out, there's six parking spaces in a small parking lot in the rear of the proposed building. And I understand the rationale for developing that number, but you also mentioned that these apartments, independent living, it's, it's like any other facility with visitors, et cetera. So, I'm just curious, in your experience, I know you said most of the tenants will not have vehicles.
Right.
But if visitors are coming on the property, do you feel like six spaces are gonna be sufficient for hopes of coming?
Definitely. Um, our experience has been with our condominium in our Village House Program that less than 10% of our tenants have, um, vehicles themselves. Um, with visitors, um, 10, yeah, 10 would be sufficient based on, once again, our experience with our rental assistance programs in, in our group homes. Um, also note that in our, um, property on Fourth Avenue, there's ample parking as well. Um, so, you have the six at Bridge House, and you have parking available right across the street at our passages facility as well.
I'm glad you brought that up, 'cause I actually took a look at the passages facility, and I noticed quite a generous parking lot at that facility for only 12 bedrooms, I think you mentioned.
Yes, 12 bedrooms.
sizable size, but much more parking. Is it, is it just overparked? Um, is there a reason?
Uh, it's staff. It, it's staff and, um, collaborative partners. Um, so, during business hours, there's always ample parking, um, but it's used primarily by staff and collaborative partners. Um, so, during off-hours, yeah, there, there's more than ample parking.
So, it's not a fair comparison to look at that facility and compare it to this one and say, you need more parking because that one has it?
No.
That's a unique situation.
No, no, it's very unique, yeah, yeah.
And your testimony is, in the event that at the Bridge House, additional, additional parking, overflow parking is needed for whatever reason, that folks would be able to use the parking lot at Passages?
Passages on Fourth Avenue, right across the street.
Okay.
Very short walk, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Members of the public, if you have questions for Mr. Walker and his testimony, now's the time, you can come up and ask questions. Well, you, you gotta come up to the microphone, 'cause there's.
Can you tell us your name, please?
Yeah.
My name is Yan Ho Hwang, spare, H-U-A-N-G. I live at, uh, One Fourth Avenue.
One Fourth Avenue?
Yeah, One Fourth Avenue. You know, nobody have, uh, contacted us to object or not object this project, nobody. You know, number two, your question is very nice, the parking space adjacent to my driveway, okay? And, uh, my, the Fourth Avenue is very busy. A lot of school bus, and a lot of senior bus, can, can, you know, pass by, and the door condition very bad, a lot of park hall, you know, they just pitching, never perfect. In case they have more car and more traffic come in, I project the congestion will happen in my corner, okay, number one. Number two, you know, I have a compassion.
This is really just a time for questions, right? Do you have questions for him?
Okay.
And there'll be time where you can come up and you can give a statement to the board, but right now, it's just questions.
At the end of all the testimony, I'll open it up for members of the public, and they can speak for or against. I'll give you as much time as you wanna make comment on. But right now, we have to ask questions on the testimony of Mr. Walker.
Is the management will be the same as the existing foster home across the street? Are they the same management or different?
Same management.
The same management?
It's the same management, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. My question is this. My house has been broken in twice since I lived there, since 2000, and I report to policemen. I complain, you know, because you have a low crime rate in Bridgewater, but the, the policeman told me, you know, your area is different, except your area, my corner area. So, I doubt if a candidate, I don't know how do you screen, do you check there, you know, record before? Although I have compassion to them, you know, or sympathy to them, but even you have a good project, you have to celebrate a good location, for example, like a fire, and like a, you know, power project. Everybody need power, electricity, but you put a power, a plant, you know, uh, just adjacent to my house, I'm a neighbor, I'll object differently, because my house value, you know, going down. You know, you can choose another location. I don't know why do you choose Bridgewater? Why don't you apply for a show here, or Morristown, or Hillside, or whatever, you know, because that's close to, Jeff's side is very important, you know. If you have a job in New York City, you know, across the New Jersey, Jersey, uh, Transit, Royal Road area, there is a lot of good area, and they have a good communication, you know. I, I mean, uh, they have a good transportation, go to some Jeff's side, that's very important, you know. That's my suggestion. So, my question is, are you going to increase the traffic in that area? And number two.
Well, let him answer the first one.
My engine.
Let's do one at a time. Let's do one at a time.
Um, we, we don't anticipate, uh, increase in, in traffic. Um, the, the staff, um, that will be associated with, uh, the project will be existing staff just relocated. So, there would not be a increase in traffic based on that. We do not anticipate many of our tenants having vehicles. Um, I wanted to start by apologizing. Um, to my knowledge, we did reach out to every neighbor, um, within, what is it, 200 yards?
200 feet, yeah.
200 feet.
Yeah.
For the open house that we held. And some neighbors did show, I, I apologize if, if we missed you. Um, it, it was not intentional, and was not intentional.
It's okay.
We did, we did intend that. Um, when it comes to screening, for our group homes, there is a meet and greet process. Um, so, there is a meet and greet process where we do screen, um, uh, youth who participate in our group homes, and we do not admit youth who are inappropriate. For the Bridge House apartment complex, there'll be screening through the Prosperity Independent Living Skills Program and other controls to ensure that the tenants are good neighbors. Um, with respect to the two break-ins. With respect to the two break-ins, one, I'm not aware of any of my kids, and I call my kids, being involved with any break-ins. It may have occurred prior to my tenure, but during the decade that I've been with Visions and Pathways, none of my kids have been involved in a break-in.
Another question for you, last question. How are you going to have fire engine maneuver the same as it used to be, or you have a more difficult difficulty, you know, in the future? Because your variance, your maximum floor area ratio will be increased from thirty-five percent, you get approved, to forty-six point five percent. So your parking space, your maneuver space for fire engine will be more difficult in the future.
I think that might be more of a question for...
Yeah, I think so, too. He didn't really testify about the FAR, but we'll get there.
Okay.
And you can come back and ask more questions when the next witness talks about FARs, floor area ratios.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Any other members of the public have questions for Mr. Walker? All right, seeing none, we're going to close. Oh, come on up. We just need your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Kaffam, I'm live on nine sixty-three Third Avenue. So I do have the two group homes, one group home right across from my street, and the other group homes on the fourth, basically on the other side of my house. Question is, are you anticipating the noise level? Because from what, the way managed for the two group home, that's, you know, I see that good, but we are pretty closed still during the day. I mean, we have a lot of traffics, and Route two eighty-seven is right behind us, and it's always constantly noise. I just kind of wonder if, you know, the noise could be a problem because, you know, typically at night, I also hear a lot, you know, when no other car gone by, but the noise simply amplified because of, you know, approximately to, you know, two eighty-seven.
Understood. We do not anticipate a large increase in vehicular traffic associated with the apartment Through our Prosperity Independent Living Skills Program, we do teach our young adults to be good neighbors and being respectful of other folks, not making a lot of noise online is part of that. Also, we will have, once again, we have twenty-four-seven staffing at our Fourth Avenue property as well as our other group homes, and so that we'll know if our tenants are making too much noise, and we will self-police, as they say, because we're very conscious of not being disruptive to our neighbors.
Okay. And the second question would be, is like, you anticipate that the area, the building, because that, you know, ten studio, right, full operating studio, I don't know how big the proposal of the building, overall building size, but I haven't seen the layout.
Right.
But is there some, like a big piece of building, I guess, in my opinion, but...
That stuff is going to have our site engineer, we actually, as an exhibit showing where it sits on the property, and then our architect.
All right, okay. And currently, I know your group home in the last, I think, two years or so have been relatively empty. Like this past year or last year have been very quiet. I haven't seen anybody moving in on my, on one of the group home across from my street. Are you expecting that that could be, could be filled as well at the one, that the bridge home that you've been doing? So because, you know, obviously, you know, things have been quiet, but if everything could be full to capacity, what's that going to be like in terms of, you know, noise and traffic?
Yeah, one, I take that as a positive, that you haven't heard a lot of noise from our group homes.
That's fine, you manage, the way you manage a group home, I have no complaint. I think you've been doing a great job with that one, and the work you guys do for the group homes.
That's on the record, right?
Right? And that's a fact, but you did something differently, you're proposing.
Thank you. But also, yeah, the census in our group homes goes up and down based on referrals from the state. So sometimes we're at full capacity, sometimes we're at low capacity. So that's what you're seeing is up and down. And part of that up and down, just for the record, is that if a young person is inappropriate, we move towards discharge. Once again, making sure that the next move is positive for the young folks. We move towards discharge as expeditiously as possible. We don't want any problems in the neighborhood.
Mr. Walker, what's the vacancy rate currently at the two other group homes in the area?
Yeah, currently, for, let's say, we're at, one thing goes at eighty percent capacity of the group home that's currently functioning.
Thank you.
That's what's, again, off the top, goes up and down, but about eighty percent of the capacity is at the operating group home.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Please. We just need your name and address.
Ronald Picato, address twelve Third Avenue. So I'm right next to the property that's getting built. How do I know and assure my family that, I don't want to point fingers, you know, but how do I assure that I'm going to be safe, you know? Like if we have ten kids that are aging out of foster care, how do I know that they've been background checked and that, you know, I can let my two-year-old kid play outside safely?
Our Prosperity Independent Living Skills Program. So for our group homes, we do not accept young adults who are, have committed arson or felonies. So that will be the pool from which we are pulling for Bridge House. So, yeah, this is the...
We currently have a water issue on the road, so I don't know if there's a lot of springs of water or wells, because my house isn't a well water.
We're going to talk about that.
You're going to go through that? Okay, all right, just wanted, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, your next witness, please. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Walker, by the way.
Thank you.
Get your full name again and your qualifications.
Yeah, it's Todd M. Hay, H-A-Y. I'm a licensed professional engineer, have been so since nineteen ninety-nine.
In New Jersey?
Yes. I've been a bachelor, I got my Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Temple University, and my Master's of Science in Civil Engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've been licensed in the last twenty-five years, also in eight states. I also happen to be represented at least ten to twelve different planning and zoning boards on municipal side. I've represented numerous different high-profile clients in the private industry, and appeared before, about a hundred and fifty planning and zoning boards in this state within the last twenty-five years.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hay, we accept you.
Thank you. No problem. Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I don't know if there's a way I could go ahead and put up on a screen, or I could mount it to a board if it's okay, colorized rendering?
There is a way, I don't know if we can make that happen. Do you have an HDMI hookup?
Do you have a thumb drive or? I do. I have both, I have everything.
Can you put the thumb drive drawings up?
And now, Mr. Chairman, I could go with the traditional manner if you'd prefer.
We have handouts, too. Yeah, for members of the public, too, I'd like them to be able to see it.
Very good. Give me one moment.
If we do have another meeting, which is likely, if you could just let Nancy know that you've got a thumb drive, and we'll make sure that we can get everything.
Yeah, is there an HDMI connection right there?
You can try it, and we can open up the screens, but our usual technology guru is not here tonight.
EV is just checking to see if we can get that on the screen.
Apologize that, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to make sure the public could see.
Except we can't, because the screens, you know, a regular IT person's not here, so we're just not...
We made it turn that around.
How about if you set it up in the corner here, where we can all see it?
That's perfect.
I think everyone can see that.
Yeah, and Mr. Hay, just if you could be aware that members of the public are also watching at home via YouTube, so when you go and reference a drawing, just, you know, kind of give us a, you know, a reference point, what you're looking at, where north and south is, so people at home can follow along with you.
Understood.
And before we get too far, we're going to mark this one as A1, okay? And then if you're just, for the record, describe what A1 is, please.
Yes, Council, so the, this drawing that's being depicted is actually a colorized version of the site plan, and the site plan, which is in your package, is known as CS-1001, and that was dated April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, with a revision date of approximately on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Revised Site Plan. So, Mr. Chairman, so what this shows is a site plan of the subject property. The subject property was commonly referred to in the past via a survey that was performed by a subconsultant of ours, number eight, and that's number eight Third Street, Third Avenue, I should say, and the property, we've visited the site extensively, we've looked at the property, the property is an existing site, single-family home with some pertinent buildings as well as a driveway. All of that would be removed and replaced with this building, this two-story building that we're proposing of a footprint of four thousand two hundred and ninety-four square feet, and then there would be a parking lot with six parking spaces, including a handicapped parking stall, and then also a ten-foot by twelve-foot enclosure essentially for garbage. The site does, on to the west side or the left side of the plan, has a fencing, and that area would enclose basically the front yard or the rear yard area as well as the side yard area, and on the easterly side or the right side of that plan, there's also proposed a vinyl fence as well. That's a six-foot vinyl fence, it is proposed as white as we speak. Over to board, if they choose to have something else, we certainly will listen to that. But again, this area will be fully enclosed on the side yards from the front yard projection back, which was essentially the face of the building, going back all the way to where the driveway is, which is off of Fourth Avenue. And to go ahead and talk a little bit further about the plan, you know, we picked this particular layout with the architect that this would fully function for the ten units as well as the parking. And those six spaces, we would be looking for a RSIS exception on this. We have looked at, we've discussed, I think, what Mr. Walker said previously about the testimony of the parking. We feel also the parking is adequate, you know, for this type of facility. You'll also notice there's a number of different landscaping. The lighting is not shown, but on the landscaping side, there happens to be ten shade trees being proposed, and also fourteen trees as well. And on the side yard, which is to the lower right side of the plan, there are five shrubs as well. There will be a sidewalk that will come off of Third Avenue, and that will go to the front of the building, and as you noticed, there is also in the lower right-hand corner or the southeast corner of the building, there is also, which our architect will describe, a deck, and then also to the north of the building, which is in the interior, the yellow portion, that is also a both a outside and also enclosed deck. So that's kind of the function of the layout, of how we laid out the site to make sure we can maximize a building site affronting Third Avenue, and then, of course, putting the parking in the rear. You'll also notice the line work to the lower, I want to say the upper left-hand corner or the northwest west corner of the site, that is where there'll be a, but we're proposing a bio-retention basin, and that will basically function to go ahead and make sure that stormwater that exits the site, that post-construction conditions will equal pre-construction conditions. So we're proposing that as well. That simply takes the stormwater from the building, which, again, I will mention is in brown, and takes that back out to Third Avenue, and then along the frontage of Lot One, which is at the very corner of North Bridge Street and Third Avenue, on the northwest corner, there happens to be a storm line that will go down Third Avenue to a basin, existing basin, to hook up that drainage from that site to an existing facility. And that basin would be rebuilt, and then also that area along where the pipe will go, there will also be, and I want to say the public can't see it, but it is on your plans, within the site plan, there will be an area that will replace the asphalt that is existing now with that pipe. So that's kind of an overview of the site. The lighting does meet all the levels. Mr. Chairman, I will tell you that we have found that the lighting levels are slightly above what is required by the township, but we will be amending the plan to show that the light levels will be below your foot candle requirement in terms of what is considered maximum at the property line. Other than that, I do not see any impacts with the residents because of the fencing, because of the extent of the landscaping. We do have a number of variances that we are seeking. Those variances are actually listed, and I will refer to CS-001, which, again, is the cover sheet, and it is revision number two, Revised Site Plan, December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Within that, there's a schedule of district regulations. That regulation is specific to Zone R-10A, and you'll notice at the bottom of that box, there is a variance summary. That variance summary covers the following: maximum floor area ratio, where zero-point-two-five is required and zero-point-four-zero is proposed. Our architect will discuss that a little further, that if you take away what is known as the cellar from the definition of FAR, that percentage drops. It still is above what is considered a maximum, but it's slightly above, and our, both our architect and planner will go over that. Maximum impervious coverage, thirty-five percent required where forty-two percent is proposed. That is not so much of the extent of just the building itself. Remember, this is an R-10A zone, and because you're proposing this type of structure and this type of use, a parking lot is required. That's why you have the extent of impervious coverage within the property, and we will be asking for relief of that, and again, both our architect and our planner will discuss that further. There's also a variance for minimum driveway parking lot setback from side-to-side yard line, which is ten-foot required and four-and-a-half-foot proposed. That is the parking stalls that lie, for the public and for the board, Mr. Chairman, on the, I want to say northeast... on the, I want to say northeast corner of the property. You'll notice there's a parking area that's designated in gray. There are parking stalls along the side yard and are basically a backing and existing property. That is where the four-and-a-half-foot lies. If it was to be increased to 10-foot, it would take away the function of the bio-retention basin, which we're using to make sure that we can attenuate what is really the stormwater regulations within the township where pre-conditions are supposed to be equal to or less than post-conditions.
Mr. Hey?
Yes?
Can I interrupt you for a moment? Given the fact that you've got insufficient space between your parking stalls and the property to the east, why don't you put in some folks, some, some plants, the buffer?
Well, we, we, it, it, it would be difficult to do that, but we could certainly see, you have to remember, there is a fence there. There is a, there is actually a solid six-foot vinyl fence that we, or we're proposing there. So they won't be able to see that, you know, shrubs, admittedly. You're welcome.
Mr. Hey, what, in 2012, what was the proposal? What, did you have a fence? I mean, you guys already had a full site plan approval here.
It's my understanding, Mr. Chairman, I, I had a chance to take a review of that and take a look at it myself. And, and that approval is completely different than what this approval is with.
Why is it different? A lot of those board members are still here.
As I understand it, the building is different, the functionality of the building is different.
So there was no fence?
For the fencing and what have you, I didn't see anything with respect to fence from the previous application. So I did look at that to understand, you know, what the security was going to be for this facility. And even though it wasn't defined as a group home.
Mr. Sweeney didn't ask you about security, he asked you about buffering and.
Understood, yeah, understood. But yeah, we wanted to take advantage of making sure that we could fit the parking module within the property as well as the best management practices, which is the stormwater basin in the rear.
So what buffering did you have in the 2012 resolution?
I, I did not prepare those plans, and my office did not either. I can only tell you that I reviewed it, and this is completely different than that application in terms of functionality.
Go back and take a look at the 2012 application? I mean, that's just common sense, why didn't you do that?
Well, you know, when we go to put together a new plan and what have you, we do it based off of whatever the programming is for this site. I don't look at it from what the previous application was, I look at it from the program.
Who not? I mean, isn't that a natural place to start? How are we proposing this building that's different from what this board approved 13 years ago? I mean, that, to me, that's common sense, I can't understand how you just say.
Give the board a break, I'm going to ask that you review the 2012 resolution, because it was signed by Scarlett Doyle, our former planner.
No, I know Scarlett.
And, and Mr. Sweeney, Mrs. Amin, and Mr. Wiedeli, I wasn't on the board yet, it was a year later. But I think it's disrespectful to the people that gave up, they're volunteers, that gave up their nights, gave up their dinners, gave up their Boy Scout, Girl Scout meetings to help you, to help, you know, this project move along. So why don't we take 10 minutes? It's 8:30, we're going to come back at 8:40, I'm going to ask you to review that resolution. And let's get it back to at least where it was in 2012. Thank you. I give you credit for it.
What's that?
You all right? I'm fine.
Early side, I don't know where the building was in the other plant.
Right, but, but. The neighbor, the west early side.
West of east, the other side.
Okay.
North is top.
Oh, right, right, right.
North is up on that plant.
Just come in like a general vicinity.
That's right, I'll get you. So the HDMI port is right here, and then he's got to get a button.
Do you have any idea the jump?
Twice. Twice.
But I, I don't know how many units were included in this from the first time around. Same number, 10?
I don't know, how are you doing?
Yeah, almost flew away.
My specialty is transportation, so like, buildings, but like.
Hi, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, it's just. Right, yeah. Darlene from Biltford? Okay, alright, that's good. What do you want me to call it?
Well, did she give you the language to use for that? Because, you know, it's not, it doesn't fit into any of the.
She doesn't do the, so she doesn't do this toll.
It's not a group home. Right. Right. And they were able to capture that?
Oh, yes.
Okay. What happens in this process when land use approval, it happens, and the project doesn't get built? And maybe if captured into inventory, they don't get built? Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But we've made the best efforts to go and supply that inventory. Right. We can't control, you know, if someone financing goes through, the project doesn't get built.
Yeah, that's crazy, I can't believe.
I just don't want to create liability. Monarch can relieve a little bit of that liability.
Yeah, I used to, yeah, I don't know if I still want.
I'm calling this a supportive, supportive of the town. Alright.
I'm ready, man.
Alright, I'm going to use that.
So the vets come to town.
It gets booed and it's all stated. Right. They're not really supporting them, they're trying to create, I guess they're supportive environment. Supporting them financially by giving off-market housing. It's not, it's not market-based, so that itself is, yeah.
I'm not too bad, I'm just, I know small business.
Right. Vinyl fence, do you care? I don't know.
My throats were not active enough to stay in there. Whatever, short a second I could do it, not there.
Okay, alright, alright. Look, I just wanted to honor Scarlett, whatever she wrote, I don't know what she wrote. That was the giant rubber hiker.
Down there, look at, look at the ball. Rocks everywhere, you guys don't write this stuff.
I'm going home with black eyes and stuff, and I was like, uh. Oh, for what, maybe you get to go to Burger King, you get the.
Oh, alright.
Everybody needs to stretch. When you get my age, you can't sit first. I'm going to your favorite place tomorrow. The animal hospital. I was shocked. Went and went there a couple, no, went and shocked went there a couple years ago. I go in, pull in, and stuff like that, I went and met Jenny there, because I had to go do one appointment with her. She was, I remember her, but we both had our cars. And I go to the lot, I went to pull out onto, what, there's no exit? There's only the exit on 202.
Yeah, it's only the main road.
I go in to the employee area.
I'm sure the planning board stipulated that, they don't want people on foot. Alright, we're going to come back in session, it's 8:41, 8:42. Kevin, could we get a quick roll call, please? Yeah, no problem. Chairman Foose?
Here.
Mr. Wiedeli?
Here.
Ms. Amin?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Fresco?
Here.
Mr. Bon Giorno?
Here.
Mr. Gajewski?
Here.
Mr. Seacat?
Here.
Mr. Kulak?
Here.
Mr. Vesio?
Here.
And Mr. Gabbit?
Here.
Mr. Hey, where are we at here? We, I did have a quick discussion with our planner, and it sounded like board-on-board was preferable over the vinyl? That's okay with your client? Okay? Alright.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I had a chance to review the plans, which I did review approximately one year ago. The resolution, however, I did not have a chance to review until now. I'll talk about the plan changes first. Plan changes from the prior STARS plan that was approved back in 2000, I believe in 13. The, the footprint of the building is much different than this footprint that's up here. The footprint was actually smaller, and the configuration of that building was actually much deeper than what is shown now on the plan. So that is one major change. The other addition of a driveway to the, I want to say southwest corner, was also prevalent on the site. That is also not being proposed here as well. And then I think two more aspect, or three more aspects, Mr. Chairman. On layout with the, I want to say the driveway as well as the parking stalls. The STARS plan approved 10s parking stalls, this is only asking for six. The reason for that is, is for the accommodation of the stormwater system. At the time, I believe the stormwater rules, this was prior before the stormwater rules actually changed, and that is why we are going ahead and providing for and proposing a system that, you know, is consistent with what the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, seven colon eight, requires. So that is a major change from that plan to the other. The water, sanitary, gas, electric, all pretty much so the same from our plan, in terms of no changes from the prior plan as well. I will also mention, Mr. Chairman, I think it's very important to mention that I noticed in the STARS resolution, which I didn't have a chance to look at, one of the big changes was also landscaping. We are proposing an extensive amount of landscaping as opposed to the landscaping that was in that resolution. That resolution only called for four trees. We are proposing approximately 24 trees as well as five bushes. So that is a substantial change.
And a fence.
And, and a fence, that is correct. But I want to make sure that also you understand as well as the board that in the prior plan, the landscaping was not on the side yards, was not around the building envelope. It was only in strategic places on that approved plan, which I do have up on my screen, I'm reviewing that. I also wanted to mention as well, there were particular variances that were approved or allowed for. The variance, which I was going to get into, and I apologize to Mr. Chairman because I wanted to finish that up, and that was for the parking stall width on the design waiver summary. The prior resolution also allowed for a nine-foot proposal in terms of width. So this application does the same as well. We'd ask for relief as residential site improvement standards do call for a nine-foot width as well, as well as an 18-foot length. So the last variance, Mr. Chairman, that was not discussed, which would be okay with you, I'd like to discuss, and that's number four under the variance summary on that sheet, CS 0001. And that is with respect to tree replacement. The amount of trees, if you look at the landscaping plan, and I want to turn the board's attention to that, if you look at CS 2001, which is the landscape plan with a revised site plan layout of number two, December 19th, 2024, that plan shows the landscaping plan in detail. It shows the planned schedule to the lower left-hand corner of the sheet. It also shows the tree replacement summary. If you look at the tree replacement summary, you will notice that there are replacement trees requirement for two-inch caliper trees, as well as replacement trees required for four-inch caliper trees. That requirement for two-inch required, two-inch caliper is 38 trees. The replacement trees required for four-inch caliper is 20. For replacement trees provided, we're asking for 14 trees, as well as for four-inch caliper, we're looking for 10 trees. Mr. Chairman, the reason for the relief is, as you can see from the rendering, you'll notice that because of the fact that we already have an extensive amount of shade trees on the property, it's almost very difficult to place that remainder of trees within that property. We do need the bio-retention basin to be open, we do need to be able to function for the stormwater management for the site.
Mr. Hey, if I may, if I might. Looking at the resolution that was passed back in 2012.
Mm-hmm.
It refers to the number of parking spaces, I'm reading. Parking spaces reduced by two to a total of 12. For the same number of residents that were here today. Why can't you get by with six if you needed 12 for the same number of residents as last time?
Well, again, I, I want to mention the fact that after reviewing the two other sites with Mr. Walker and looking at how many parking stalls would be utilized. with Mr. Walker and looking at how many parking stalls would be utilized at the site, the reason for the request of relief is because of the fact that most of the folks that will be in this particular apartment, as was defined by Mr. Walker, are not going to have transportation, are not going to have vehicles. It's a little bit different this time.
Proposed back in two thousand twelve.
Yeah, I can't speak to Mr. Stires because I'm going to say it again. I'm not the one that did the testimony, nor did I sign and seal those plans. I only understand it based on what this particular program was meant for. I also will mention the fact that I think that there was an opportunity back then to look at maybe the stormwater a little bit differently, but from what Mr. Stires proposed, it was based under a whole different function of stormwater management regulations. We're in a different territory now with being able to provide this type of system, and this is the only place where we could provide it in terms of the relief that we got on the site, or we were able to provide.
Oh, it's stormwater. That's responsible for the smaller number of parking spots that you need today as opposed to what you told us you needed twelve years ago. Is that correct?
Again, I did not testify twelve years ago. I've, I, I understand that, but you know, for stormwater management purposes, and what Mr. Walker told me about the program with this and the fact he has two other facilities in Bridgewater, which I'm very familiar with, I had told him, I said, I think we'll be okay and be able to show that we do need this variance. We do need this type of system. This type of system is very prevalent in stormwater management design guidelines throughout New Jersey, and we felt it was best.
Yeah, plier it too. I, we did review that previous, we're extension extensive when we took on this matter and to echo what Mr. Walker testified, that was applied to back in two thousand twelve as a conditional use group home, whereas this is the independent living, and the group home is Mr. Walker indicated, and that's why there's more parking across street with group homes has the staffing. I'm just, so I don't mind if I recall Mr. Walker, because this back in twelve, two thousand twelve, conditional use group home with the staffing, which again is not, is not needed here, and we felt that having more green space and landscaping, that was part of the team developing this one, but we certainly respect.
Mr. Hay?
You're, you're creating a credibility issue. I'm looking at what you're proposing today compared with what you told us you needed twelve years ago. It's very, very different. Tell me why. I don't get it.
Yeah, it's.
This is independent.
How is that, how does one differ from the other?
Mr. Walker testified extensively as a group home, and I didn't hear much.
I was sitting here and I didn't hear much about the differences between a group home and this apartment building you're proposing. Let's bring Mr. Walker back.
No, 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 no.
I, I have a comment also.
Mrs. Amin, Mrs. Amin.
Hold on.
Mr. Hay, could you accommodate more parking spots if you had a lower threshold of water management like you had in two thousand twelve? So basically, what I heard was you saying that there is a higher threshold, higher requirement for water management now versus the two thousand twelve case, and that necessitated the reason that you had to remove parking from the site?
That was what, yeah, that was probably the main reason, Mr. Chairman, absolutely.
Okay. Do we need Mr. Walker back? I really would like to get you through. You've seen our agenda.
Sure.
I'd like to keep pressing forward if possible. Why are we calling Mr. Walker back? As lovely a man as he is? Yeah.
I, I do have a comment and a question. See, the way your building is laid out, you have two offices in basement, conference room, and there are ten apartments. So if you get visitors, for those people who live in the apartments, plus the office workers and all that, I don't think six spaces are enough from that perspective, from my viewpoint. Six is not enough, and we don't want people to be parking on the street.
I'm going to defer to our architect to answer that as well as our planner.
Mr. Walker, if you could just grab this mic real quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. Will you have office workers at your project facility here?
The, I'll start with difference between the group home and the apartment complex. With a group home, there's a tremendous amount of staffing. You have case managers, you have behavioral health staff, you have the prosperity independent living skills workers on staff at the group home. With the apartment complex, you do not have that level of staffing. So you're talking three, four times level of staffing for a group home that you'd need for apartment complex. In the apartment complex, the staffing that we will have there will park over at Fourth Avenue. I, I can't speak to the plans from ten years ago. Maybe they anticipated that the staff would park at that facility because it was a group home. That level of staffing, four times level of staffing for a group home as compared to apartment complex, is not required under the current plan. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes all of the aspects that are in the plans. Obviously, if there's anything else that the board has questions with, we'll take questions.
Yeah, we're going to have to talk about water management and the bioretention basin and, you know, basically, I'm going to open it up to Mr. Burr, how you want to handle this. And, you know, again, we had, you know, a full site plan approval in two thousand twelve. He reviewed it. What we have now, how can we make the neighbors feel safe? How can we make the board feel safe about what's being proposed? Why don't we just open it up? Let's start going through it.
Uh, sure. I, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Hay, but I'll just give the board my take on the drainage design quickly. I would say that the drainage layout that's proposed with this application is vastly improved from the prior application and mainly due to some of the changes in regulations. There was not, that I recall, a bioretention or detention basin proposed on the prior approval. So that in and of itself is a huge improvement. Right now, all of the drainage or the water flows from fourth Ave down to Third Ave, and I think we have some ponding water along Third Ave. There is, I believe, a seasonal spring near the existing driveway that I've seen photos of. I haven't seen it in person, but I do think something is going on out there. But by and large, I think the drainage proposal that's currently being proposed mu- much improved, and I think it's going to improve the existing conditions if this application is approved. Of course, like anything else, the facility is going to need to be maintained. You know, they have a detention basin with vegetation. I think there's an underdrain system. There's pervious pavement in the parking lot. So all of those features are going to need to have a high level of maintenance, and the applicant's going to have to put an operation and maintenance manual together for my review and, and ultimately be filed with the county on the deed of the property. So that's an important factor. But yeah, to, just, just to give, give the board my, my take, I think the drainage plan overall is sufficient. There's a few, you know, a few, few tweaks here and there. I picked up a couple of, you know, minor issues in the stormwater report that I can talk to Mr. Hay about. Won't change the end result of what's being proposed. Now, I did mention there, the existing driveway, gravel driveway that exists on the westerly side of the, of the, of the existing home does look like there is a spring out there, some type of groundwater seepage that does spill over onto Third Ave. One of the questions I was going to have is, is there a way that the applicant can take a look at that and perhaps try to manage that so that it's not causing an icing issue in the winter time, get that connected into the existing storm sewer on the street? I think that's going to be a big improvement. That's one question I have. I don't know if that's something that Todd, you can answer too, or?
Yeah, Mr. Burr, I can't answer that. Yeah, if, if there is a, I want to say a perched water condition or some type of, you know, a, a subsurface water condition, to manage that, as you know, an underdrain system would be appropriate. A system with such as a French drain, obviously with some type of piping that could actually go ahead and connect back into the main pipe that flows the Third Avenue, yeah, we will provide that and we will review that, and we would accept that as a condition of approval.
Very good. And just to be clear as well, the bioretention basin that's being constructed or being proposed in the rear, that's to capture the runoff from the new structure, correct? The new four thousand-plus square foot home.
That is correct. Yes.
So there will not be, and then, and then the parking lot in the rear will also be managed through the drainage in that small parking lot, such that there won't be any runoff leaving impervious surfaces from this project.
Correct.
Without being managed.
Yes, yes, Mr. Burr. That is correct. All, and it is shown in our stormwater report for board reference as well as public reference. The building will be captured by the bioretention basin. The impervious, and I should say pervious paving will capture all impervious area within the rear of the property.
And let me ask you, while we were on the topic of comparing your current proposal to the two thousand twelve approval from a lot coverage perspective, can you, Todd, just touch base on the numbers that were approved previously compared to what you're currently proposing?
If you give me more moment, I'll find those numbers.
Bill, while he's looking for that, what you were mentioning before, were you saying tie in the roof leaders underground to Third?
No. So, so I wanted confirmation that all of the new impervious coverage on this project gets tied into new drainage features on the property. So the new building, the roof runoff is going to be directed directly to that new detention basin. What I wanted to make sure of is there seems to be a spring of some sort, perched water, some, some type of groundwater condition in the front of the existing home. What I heard as a condition of approval, the applicant would connect or, or I guess, capture by way of a French drain or an underdrain, that water and tie that into the street drainage. So two issues, the, the management of the water on site and then the compliance of that, that groundwater along the frontage.
Mr. Burr, I have a question. In terms of the natural spring, what type of flow rate are we looking at?
Flow rate?
Yeah.
I don't think there's much flow rate at all, to be honest with you. I think from what I've seen in photos, it just looks like a very small amount. Now, I could be wrong. I haven't seen, I haven't seen it in person, but what I've seen in photos is just water accumulating at the edge of the pavement. It ices up. You can see a little bit of seeping along.
A very slow seepage.
I think it's more of a nuisance safety type issue as opposed to a heavy flow of water where it's really impacting properties, to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Burr, I do have the answer to your question. You might. I just wanted to let you know. So the plan that I am referencing is the previous Stires plan that was approved back in two thousand thirteen. In the zoning data table, which was located in the right center of the sheet, there is a line for maximum improved lot coverage, acquired thirty-five percent. At the time, with the existing lots for an eighteen, it looks like that was before there was some type of a lot merger. That happened to be twelve point nine percent. The proposed impervious coverage at that time of approval was fifty point seven percent. As you know, with this proposal, we are proposing forty-two point one six percent. So that's nearly an eight point five percent reduction in impervious area.
Todd, can you equate that into square footage? Sorry to make you do math on, on the spot. An eight percent reduction in coverage would amount to?
It's nearly eighteen hundred square feet, seventeen to eighteen hundred square feet.
Reduction in coverage. Okay. So that in and of itself is a benefit to your, to your design and the drainage design that's being proposed, having less coverage, correct?
That is correct. And to take it further, it appears that from the original Stires plan, the drainage was going towards Fourth Avenue and not Third Avenue at the, at the time of approval.
Okay. Um, in, in one of your prior plan revisions, your driveway access actually came off of Third Ave. Through the course of making some revisions, now we have the parking lot with your access to Fourth Ave.
Correct.
Give us an overview on why that change was made. Was it in an effort to reduce the coverage or address some drainage issues, or was there another, another reason why that was made?
It was done with reasoning for the resident's sake to obviously go ahead and take it off of Third Avenue and put it in Fourth Avenue so that there would be also functionality between the existing group home across the street, since there'll be shared staff, as well as concealing the driveway. If you look at one of the other facilities, it's very similar to the other facilities in terms of where the staff park behind the building, where also you'll find a lot of the impervious area. And we have a site like that in Bridgewater as well. So we felt that was best, but it did reduce the amount of impervious area. That is correct.
Okay. Your plans show proposed utility connections, sanitary sewer, I think, I believe, gas coming off of Third Ave, and then I think your water connection comes off of Fourth Ave.
Yes, that is correct, and that is the same as the Stires plan in approval back in two thousand thirteen.
With your sewer connection, you show a pavement repair area in front of your proposed building.
That is correct.
Which is a typical trench-sized pavement repair.
That is correct.
What I will note, though, is that that sanitary sewer on Third Ave is anywhere from twelve to fourteen feet deep. So in the course of this is approved, your, your utility connection and then pavement repair is very likely going to be much larger. I wanted to make you aware of that and make sure that the applicant would do the proper pavement repair, whatever is necessary to, like I said, repair the pavement in front of the building.
If it's okay with you, as a condition, we will revise the plan to show the current trench width based on the depth.
That would be perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any signage being proposed?
No, there is no signage proposed, and any, any building signage will be discussed by Mr. Buckman, his testimony as architect.
Lighting. I think what I, what I recall you testifying to was the exterior lighting, where you are exceeding the current ordinance standards, you're going to revise your plans to make sure that any exterior lighting is now in compliance with the ordinance. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct, and it would be two different ways of doing that. One is by readjusting the ballast or going ahead and eliminating that light or moving that light away from the property line.
Okay. And all of the exterior lighting will be cut off, down shielded, pointed away from any of the adjacent residential properties?
Yes, it is. Additional condition, we will provide a note to say as such.
Okay. Last question I have is just the dumpster refuse enclosure, enclosure area at the corner of the parking lot. In your opinion, that's appropriately located? A garbage truck can get in to the parking lot and access that, or how, how will that function?
Yes, that is correct. So it, looking at C S one zero zero one with a revised site layout of December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, we did address your letter with respect to that with the garbage truck turning template, an appropriate turning template showing a waste collection truck. That does show in the upper left-hand corner of that particular plan, how a garbage truck will maneuver in and out of the driveway to get to the garbage area. That dumpster enclosure could be four-yard dumpsters. It could be something, maybe two, two-yard dumpsters, but a garbage truck can safely traverse in and out based on that turning exhibit.
And that's going to be private hauler, and they're going to come however frequent is necessary.
That is correct.
Very good. I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. I don't know if, if you or any of the board members have any questions for me.
I want to open it back up to the board if they have any stormwater questions for either Mr. Burr or Mr. Mr. Hay.
I have a question about stormwater, but on your plan. So you're showing on the, I guess, easterly side yard that there's an existing brick wall over the property line? You see that, the northern side of it?
You're saying it's on the northeast corner, counsel?
Yeah, that northeast corner.
Yes.
And then you're showing the fence kind of like right through that wall. What's, what are we, what are we planning to do?
We could put as a condition, counsel, to go ahead and work with the property owner to obviously relocate that, obviously during construction. That's something that we will have to do, and we could put a condition into that, and we'll also revise the plan to show it as such.
Okay.
If there's any proper building department approvals that are needed because of any wall that's over four foot in height per New Jersey code, we'll go ahead and also put a note on that to say that we'll get proper building department approvals for that.
Is that a retaining wall there now?
Yes.
Only about a foot high, right?
Yeah, but you, you know, I don't know the extent of the depth there. We have not done, we've done limited geotechnical work and environmental work on the property.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a minor comment on the lighting. I noticed for the driveway, you have like a commercial light fixture with a twenty-four, you know, twenty-foot tall. 20-foot tall pole there. I mean, this is a residential zone. Could, could we, could you change that type of lighting to be more residential? Not so high, so, you know, we sort of cast that light on adjacent properties.
We, we could look at the height of, yeah, that's correct. We, we can look at the height of the poles and what have you, as well as changing out the ballast and the light levels. That is something that we could explore and we could work with your engineer to make that acceptable within the area.
But it's a very commercial light fixture. I mean, this is a residential zone. Are there residential-type light fixtures that would be?
To be honest with you, in a lot of different apartment buildings, which I've done in multi-state, there really isn't. They do, you can make them kind of, want to say, invisible. And what I mean is they're only very minimalistic where you don't really see them and they're shorter. And that's something that I think I could work with Mr. Burr on to come up with something that makes sense for that area.
Okay, thank you.
You good with that, Mr. Burr? Okay, great. All right. Any other board questions? All right, Catherine.
I have one more question.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Todd, I don't know if you can answer this, but I'm going to ask anyway. So going back to the 2012 approval, and I want to put your attention to condition number seven. So when, when this application was before the prior zoning board, there was a condition of approval that the applicant was going to construct sidewalk along Fourth Ave from the rear of this property out to North Bridge Street. And I believe, I think Fourth Ave only has sidewalk on the northerly side of the road. Is that something that the applicant would be willing to honor?
We would be willing to honor that because of the fact that we already obviously put against concrete within our property. Yeah, the survey, the current survey, which we did within the last year, what Mr. Burr is referring to, does not show sidewalks. But if we have to provide it within our frontage and it may be a connection point, yeah, we, we would provide that.
I got you, Bill. Thank you. That's, that's good stuff. We, we really do want to honor that 2012 agreement in every way, shape, and form because that board did convene, they did have multiple meetings, and they spent their time on it. It's important, it was important then, it's an important point now.
No problem.
Catherine.
Thank you. As far as the, I know you answered some questions from Mr. Burr regarding the trash enclosure and the, and the garbage truck circulation. And just looking across the street at the trash enclosure at the other property, it is fenced in and it's not in great condition. Is there any chance that instead of using fencing around there, it could be a masonry trash enclosure?
Absolutely. If that, and again, you know, this was an open discussion with the board to determine if they would want to add something other than some type of vinyl fence, but masonry, in my experience, that is simply another alternative. If the board wishes that, I would just need to know what the finish is so that I can make sure that our, you know, our applicant knows and our builder knows how to price it out.
The finish should match the, or complement the materials of the building best possible. Only reason I offer masonry is it's just going to last longer, particularly when trash cans are coming in and out of there. I mean, I looked at the condition of the other one across the street, it's not in great shape, and that still probably help maintain it over a longer period of time.
We, we should be able to provide, Mr. Chairman, I just would defer to our architect to maybe talk a little bit more about what type of treatment could be there to put in a resolution.
Okay. I know that we've looked back at the, the prior resolution. I don't think it gave a lot of detail as far as where the landscaping was. I think some of the landscaping was around the dumpster enclosures where they called out those four R-variety, but I think they were offering some landscaping, or at least they gave a nod to the idea that the park, the variance from the distance of the driveway between the property line was very similar to this one, is about 5.2 feet. And it seemed like they were offering landscaping, which satisfied the board. I know that there's a fence between there. I know that the gap is probably only four feet, and it looks like there might be a brick wall, but if there's any chance to put some, some plantings along that property line, I think it might do some service to the, the neighboring property there, simply because the head-in lights and everything, you know, I think it might offer some nice, some nice screening for them.
You talking about the, the frontage on Third Avenue or?
Yeah, between the two prop, between Lot 3 to the east and the, and the head-in parking.
Okay, well, you remember, you have a six-foot vinyl fence there and?
Board-on-board fence?
Board-on-board.
Board-on-board, right. But it's board, it will board-on-board.
And that, you think that'll be satisfactory to, to screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Much, yes.
Okay, then that's fine. And I, I think the rest of my comments are going to be for the architect.
Very good.
Thank you.
Members of the public, questions on the engineering testimony you heard? Please. Just get your name and address, please.
Bill Linville, 1021.
Say that again?
Bill Linville, 1021 Tulow Farm Road. This is not my neighborhood, but a close family friend owns the house next door. And thank you for your service. I know being here these long evenings is, is really giving up a lot. Very quickly, Third does not have a water line. The hydrants are on the other side of Bridge Street and over on Shasta. Wouldn't water be appropriate in front of the wood-framed building?
When you mean water, do you mean potable water or you mean stormwater?
Potable and, and hydrant. So a regular water line.
The regular water line is mimicking the same approval that we did back in 2013 going to Fourth Avenue.
But now you have a 10-unit apartment building, quite a different application.
It's not that much different, to be quite honest with you. You know, even one extra unit is not going to cause, cause for concern in terms of having to put, let's say, two extra water lines in or what have you. We also looked into where available water would be, and we were told to use the Fourth Avenue water main.
And that would be by the fire department or?
It will be required by, based on whatever municipal authority says we need to connect into. We did talk to, I believe we talked to the township a little bit about that, and we were told to use that line.
Do we have a letter from the chief on this project?
We have not gotten a letter, Mr. Chairman. We have not seen one, and we, we have not seen a letter.
Did you request one?
We, we always make a request, but no, we have not received one. We'll adhere to whatever requirement there is.
All right, well, that's going to be something at some point that we need the chief to weigh in on, on this thing. You know, I think it's a great question this resident has, and we want to make sure that the chief puts on record that this is safe and it's appropriate for firefighting.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
You got it. Any other members? Just need your name and address again.
Yes, I'm Kaffam, 963 Third Avenue. So, so you propose the, there's a two-story structure. What is the, what, what are the higher, what the?
Could you just talk into the microphone, please? The microphone in front of you.
Yeah, the, what the height of this property from the ground?
You, you're talking about the height of the building and what have you? So the building height right now that's being proposed is 34.6 feet.
In, in term of, in term of construction time, what, how long is the construction from start to finish, do you anticipate that that will take?
I'm going to defer that to the architect because the architect would be able to answer that question.
And do you know when the, the construction will begin? Because I know, you know, they proposed it back in 2012 or 13, right? Just, just curious from my point.
That's testimony, I believe, that Mr. Walker had offered before.
That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else going once, going twice? All right, Mr. Hay, your next witness, please. Mr. Hay.
You're good in that department.
I got a bachelor of architecture last century in 1985 from Pratt Institute. I've been managing partner or main owner of Buckman Architectural Group for, since 88. I, I've been before many boards. I believe I've been before this board, but it was a long time ago, so I don't, I'm not sure, but I've been doing this a long time. I, I'm licensed in like about 12 states, of which New Jersey is, is my main one and is current, and I'm New Jersey 11806.
All right, thank you. We accept you as an expert in architecture.
All right. Mr. Buckman, if you could take us through the post-structure that's going to be built here, floor plans, elevations, and I believe you also have a colored rendering.
Yes.
Steve, we're going to mark that one A2, please. And then, Mr. Buckman, once we mark that A2, would you just describe for the record what that is?
Yes.
Yeah, Bill, tell, yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you. I hate to make you juggle, but there's a handheld mic there. If you're going to be standing near the, your exhibit, then you can use that.
Kevin, why don't we sacrifice your mic there?
Hello, hello?
There we go.
Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to walk through the building and I'm going to use SK1, SK2, and SK3, which, which were submitted and you. I hope you guys can see. I'll stand over here. So basically, this building has apartments on the first floor and apartments on the second floor. I'm going to stand here. So one would walk in the main level of the first floor, indicated as proposed first floor. The front porch of the building, which would face Third Avenue, that's to the south. And then to the north, there's a secondary or another entry into the building off the, the back of the covered deck in the rear. And this is in the same orientation as the site plan, so the parking is on this side. Passages is part of the visions and pathways complex. That would be up here, the offices and the, and the group home. And then across the street from Third is My Place, which is another, is a group home that has five, five homes. As you, has been testified, this will have 10 apartments, studio apartments, affordable. And I think you've heard testimony on, on the residents who will be there. The first floor, we show the front of the building, a small porch, and off that, a space labeled lobby. Basically, that's where the, the mail would come in. We have an area for packages. Then we have the stairs to go upstairs, as well as an elevator, also going upstairs and, and downstairs, by the way, to the cellar. We have a small office here. It's not intended that it would be staffed, but it might be needed once in a while. There will be some services offered to the residents here, and that's a space it could be. We also have spaces in the cellar that, that could handle that when there's, when there is services needed. And then a small area here, we just labeled it security. We don't intend that that would be staffed, but we figured for growth and just we put, we put that little area there to, if we ever need control of who's coming in and out of the building. The second floor, we have six apartments there. Oh, by the way, we have four on the first floor. We have six upstairs, basically that's all that's up there, two stairs, one on either side of the corridor, and then the elevator. And we have each unit, each unit is about the same. They range, they're, they're about 600 square feet. They range from 588 to 622 square feet, and those are bigger, considerably larger than the, the past approved plans of 2012. That is one reason that the building was made considerably bigger. It had to for regulations of, of the, the, each unit has changed since then. Plus, these are apartments and not group home. So that was another reason the building got bigger. And that's it for those two floors. If we go down to the cellar plan, we thought it made sense to have a full cellar. And especially since it did not count for the FAR, it made sense. And once you build something, you can't go back and add a cellar later, so it makes sense. It's, it's an easy way to get more space. We do have, we, we have a requirement for storage space, we have a requirement for utilities, and an electric machine room as well. And so we have all that. We wanted a laundry room for these, these folks. We, and then we have two offices, they're large mainly because there was space left over. That could be made smaller, but it was space left over. And they're big offices, but we, we show them as offices because we never know, they have, they might need a social worker, they might need, there's all kinds of need because Visions and Pathways does offer that service. This is part of their larger complex. So the staff is at the other, other, in some of the other buildings anyway, so if anyone here needed services, they could do it here. We've, and then we'd have some private space. Needs to be private. The previous application had some small offices as well. They also had, we have an activity room here. That would be more, that would be for group activities, and sometimes maybe group, it's, it's unknown what, all the needs would be, but thinking of growth, it could be some group health, health to get-togethers and.
Yeah, we lost it.
I have a question for you. The, the lower level of the building, what is the height, height of the ceiling, height to the ceiling for the basement, basement or cellar, whatever you call it? What is the height? It should be less than seven feet, then that's what, okay. Okay, my question is regarding?
This, yeah.
The ceiling height for the lower level?
Yeah.
So that, whether it should be included in the floor area ratio or not based upon ceiling height? It has to be less than seven feet?
Ceiling height for the?
Yeah, it would be eight-foot ceilings.
Less than seven feet or is it?
No, no less than seven feet. No, no, no. Eight-foot. Eight-foot.
And that's what I want to make sure, because I couldn't find it on the drawings.
I'm sorry?
I could not find it on the drawings, so that's why I had a question.
Yeah, we have ten-foot floor to floor. We'd have to, when we do construction documents, that would certainly, we have to be over seven feet, anyway. But we wouldn't be low, we wouldn't be that low, anyway. So, eight feet. We might get more than that, depending on when we do the construction drawings, what it works out to be. With ten-foot floor to floor, generally, we get certainly eight feet. Sometimes, we can get 8'6", depending on the...
Is the layout of the units, the apartments, does it allow two beds to be put in there? So you can put in two people in there? Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Is the layout of the apartment such that you can put two bedrooms, two beds in that apartment? Is that space? But is the space laid out that you could put two? Okay. I mean, if someone comes, two people come and then occupy that apartment, we don't have any control, I guess.
Well, if I understand the conditions that we've been kind of accumulating, one of them was going to be that there'd be a maximum of 10 residents in the building, correct?
And each of the units would be single occupancy?
Just a single occupancy, right.
Mr. Board, are there any questions on that? If Vision Pathways does, say, sell the property for some reason, is the next owner held to 10 single-use?
Part of the deed restriction, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the exterior of the building, we are proposing the, we have, well, we design, I know one of the questions was the design and how it fits into the neighborhood. We want this to fit into the neighborhood, which we have five other homes on East, on both, on the North and South.
Fourth Avenue has five other homes?
Yeah, if you could just talk into that, Mike, I'm sorry. I just texted the mayor and asked him, please get us wireless mics in the next budget.
Sorry about that. I should be able to yell louder, but can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue both have five other homes, phones, homes on them, and then plus the other parts of the Visions and Pathways complex, which would be Passages, which consists of two buildings, and it is the office part and the apartment, the group home part, and then My Place on Third, which houses five, and that's a group home. So, all those 10 buildings, homes around there, all have, except for one, which is a hip roof, they all have gable roofs. So we decided it would be best to put a gable roof. What we like about that is it's angled away from the street, and so it doesn't look, seem as tall. And so, that's what we've done with the design, you can see here. And the materials we're using are typical resident, more residential materials for most homes, which is like wood siding. This, we propose hardy board siding. I'm sure, as a board, you're probably familiar with that. It looks like wood siding. It's actually a cementitious board, so it's safer in case of fire, and it's also low maintenance. Doesn't have to be painted every few years. It looks like wood siding. It's very common in residential homes and buildings. So, we have the front porch, and we have details, details would be around the windows and the trim and the pilasters. Very residential look, and that's what we went for to fit into this neighborhood. Bless you. So we've got the height, the building heights. And now, as I said, I refer to the color rendering, and we did it, we may as well show it. That helps you visualize what it would look like. The other materials are all pretty much residential, what you'd find on most single-family houses. The asphalt shingles on the roof and the wood trim. And it was mentioned about the dumpster. As I understood, it's requested to be vinyl to match the building. Is that, is that correct?
I think she said masonry.
I think we were able to do that, yes.
Mr. Buckman, would you comment on the mass of this proposed building and how it specifically compares with the other homes immediately adjacent?
Yeah. Immediately adjacent, and in fact, these are both on pretty short roads. Third Avenue only goes to the end, it butts in, it's, they're both dead-end roads. One is only one block, and it butts into 287. There's five homes there. They're all gable roofs, so we matched the massing to be the same as all those. There is one roof that's a hip roof on Third, but I don't see, it's a very similar look for, as far as massing. On Fourth Avenue, it goes a couple blocks, but it also, it deadends to, deadends into a park, a large parking lot, which is a large apartment building, I believe eight stories high. So it's basically a dead end there, too. There are five other homes on, on that, on Fourth, that all do have gable roofs and will be similar. This will be similar to those. Much bigger, but similar.
Well, I'm concerned about the much bigger aspect that you just mentioned. Mass of this building. I don't care about the gable roofs. Mass of this building compared to those immediately adjacent. That's what I'm looking for.
Oh, okay. Well, massing is very similar, but it is larger in scale, just because it's a larger, it is an apartment building.
I'm trying to come to grips with how the mass of this building compares to those immediately adjacent.
Okay. I can say, I do know, I didn't measure any of the homes, but they're single-family homes. I can say, right across the street on Fourth, it's Passages, and that is 5,000 square foot, square footage, and the massing is about the same, two stories high. And this is 8,000 square foot footprint. It is larger, but the height is the same. And the height is actually the same of a lot of the homes, the two-story homes.
What about the single-family homes immediately adjacent to this proposed building?
This is a larger building, that is correct. The scale is a good amount bigger. Of course, the property's a lot bigger.
Thank you.
I hope, did I, did I answer that?
No, you didn't, but that's fine.
I notice your plans have stairs, one stair goes up to the attic.
I'm sorry?
One of your stairs appears to go up to the attic. What is the attic?
The attic will just be HVAC equipment. It's not habitable.
Okay, so the residents wouldn't have access to the attic space? Okay, and just utility space only?
That'll be utility, well, really duct, ductwork, I mean, area, the hallway. It won't be meant to be used, really, just, except for maintenance.
Okay. Is the building sprinkled in your proposed design?
It's not, it does not need, but we have not discussed, by code it doesn't, but sometimes the fire inspectors want them to be, in which case, we would comply with whatever they would. I don't, we did not get to any review yet, but...
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
I have a question for you while you're talking about this. Is it going to be universal air conditioning, heating, or individual air conditioning?
Individual.
Individual, so everybody can control?
That's our intention, yes. Individual, so they'll have control. It'll be kind of like, well, kind of like a hotel would be, or a other small, small studio and a small apartment.
What type of air conditioning are you gonna have, then?
It would be a unit that has both heating elements and cooling.
Like a hotel?
We would have a separate system for the hallways and the other, the common area spaces. The stairs, the bathroom, the offices, and downstairs.
Okay.
I just want to get confirmation that the cellar space will, there's no plan to ever make that into additional units?
The cellar space would not have any housing, and no dwelling at all.
Or in the future?
Correct.
Okay. Make that a condition, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem, make that a condition.
Any other board questions? Board professionals?
Thank you. I think to answer Mr. Sweeney's questions about massing, I don't know if you're asking for what's surrounding it, but to the east, if you're looking from Third, if you're looking to the east, you've got a ranch. On the other corner, on Fourth, you've got a ranch. So, massing-wise, the ranches are much lower. They may be wide like this one, but they're lower. And then, to the west, you've got more narrow lots, so they have the entryway on the narrow side of the home. So they may, they're longer than they are wide on the lots because of the configuration of the lots, and that's more interior towards, I think, Shasta over there. So, it's gonna look different, but I think it'll be an improvement to what's there on Third, but it will, it will look different, and it will look much bigger than the other homes that are there right now.
Thank you.
As far as the, I don't know if it was touched upon, I know it was something that was provided in the supplemental review memo, but can you describe the change to the categorization of the basement area? Did anything change about the basement use as it was programmed on the floor plans? And then, you know, how did you come to the conclusion about category, change in the category of that?
The basement, it's always been a cellar. Very often, the word basement is just used for below grade, but cellars are different, and by building code, different, in that they're more, more below grade than, they're at least half the floor below grade as a cellar. A basement is usually less than half, half of a grade, half the height of the grade. We always intended this to be a cellar because the intention was to get all the programming to fit for this building and all the regulation changes since 2012. The building had to get considerably bigger, and the cellar was, at the time, it was our understanding, the cellar would not count for the FAR, so it was always intended to be a cellar, once this redesign and coming back to the board was necessary.
So...
So nothing, to answer, I'm sorry, Kathleen, nothing changed except the designation of cellar?
Okay. Just so the board knows, the original plans that were submitted and reviewed back last year, when it was originally to be heard, included an FAR of .67, which, since the plans have been revised, dropped to .40, effectively with no change to the building, as the architect just mentioned. It was really just a reclassification of the basement to a cellar. And so, as he just stated, per building code, that's kind of how the definitions in the ordinance read as well about how to classify a cellar in a basement. What I'm curious about is, is does the building code capture use categories in a cellar or limit them in any way, such as the use for occupied space, like offices? Does it have any egress requirements that are different from maybe a basement classification?
No, as long as it meets the size and the construction and all, if it meets, for building permits, there's no other, other classification, there's no other needs to it. So, the answer's no.
Okay.
We would have, obviously, we would definitely meet all the code requirements.
Okay. So just so the board knows, you know, I, it's a used space. Normally, it's an additional story that I would count towards the FAR. In calling it a cellar, but still using it for everything it was when they called it a basement, it technically is more below grade, so it meets the code, the definition in our code for cellar. The FAR calculation excludes cellar, so that's where they, where the calculation of FAR comes. I would still keep it in consideration by this board that there is an entire use, use story below grade that will contribute to, not to the massing of the building, because the massing of the building is all above grade, but it will contribute to the use of the property. And as, you know, testified to, there was potential for use in that basement in addition to the apartments. And so, I would, I would maybe not go down that path of using it for anything besides the residents of the area, because it will only generate additional traffic and parking needs. So I would be careful that that area, and I recommend this to the board, be restricted simply to the use of the apartment, to the users, because there are two pretty large offices down there, and I know across the street...
Is there a stipulation here that's gonna cover this?
You had no problem at all with that.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't want to see office space start to get utilized by employees outside of this apartment use, this residential use, and have parking issues kind of arise because of something like that.
So we're gonna write a stipulation that's gonna cover that?
No, no problem.
Great. So that was my big-ticket item on architecture, so I'm glad we put that to bed. As far as the colored rendering, this is the first time I'm seeing the colored rendering. Can you describe if those colors are just for display purposes, or is that kind of what's been landed on?
They're, well, both, they're for display area. We came up with these colors, they're complimentary to Passages, which is not that color, more of a yellow, but also, these happen to be the logo colors for Visions and Pathways, and we thought it might be kind of cool to use those, but...
I'll defer to the board on if they want to have any input on the aesthetic and the colors of the materials. I'm not particularly thrilled with green and blue, but I think for, the architecture and the materials and colors should, should help conform with the neighborhood. It will be probably the most massive building on this side of Third Street, Third Ave, and I think that they should keep that in consideration to help with the massing. And having brightly colored materials may not help with that.
Would you be willing to work with our township planner?
Absolutely.
Coming up with something that is appropriate to the neighborhood? Great. Purple baby.
Prior bill just pointed out to me that the prior approval called for earth tones.
Called for what?
Earth tones.
We'll be happy to go with earth tones.
Okay.
Thank you. I do not believe I have anything else for this witness.
Okay. Members of the public, questions on the architectural testimony you've heard? What? Oh, I'm sorry, Bill Burr. I went right over you.
That's all right, Jonathan.
Sorry.
I don't know if we were just trying to move things along? I'm not, I don't have, I don't have much. You described the building. You agreed as a condition to work with Catherine on the coloration of the building.
No problem.
Describe quickly for the board, I think your layout also shows a covered deck, and then an open deck. Can you quickly just give the board an overview of what they consist of, their sizes, the materials, and...
Yes. The deck, Mr. Burr is referring to is towards the parking lot on the north side of the building, and this is a small deck, which maybe 60% of it is covered. It would be under, so the sun wouldn't be hitting anyone there, or rain, and then there's a part of it that is open, like just a regular deck. That would also be the rear entrance to the building, so anyone... That would also be the rear entrance to the building, so anyone who is coming from the parking lot would enter, probably enter that area.
Will the decks be composite material, pressure-treated? Hasn't the, has the material been selected yet?
No, it hasn't been even thought of yet until, we didn't want to presume we'd get approved here, but it would be a composite deck, chances are, yeah. That's usually what we use for residential decks like this.
And you touched on my other question, which was access to the building for tenants and visitors. There's a front doorway with a covered porch off of Third Ave.
That is correct.
There's also a rear entrance off the decks from the Fourth Ave side, from the parking lot side?
That is correct. On the south side, there would be a front porch, it's, as we say, front, because that's really the front of the building, the address is off of Third, and that's where the mail would come in, that's where, probably on Halloween, that's the door they'd come to. But I would imagine the rear, the door off the deck gets used probably more by the residents, that's where they'd be walking from the bus, from Bridge and North Bridge. But there are, yes, there are two entry spots, oh, and by the way, there are two doors on the east, one on the east and one on the west side. Those are off the stairs, those would be for emergency egress only.
On the east and west?
Yeah.
And just operationally, as far as how the main access points are going to function, will they be self-closing and locking doors? Will the tenants have like a key fob to get in and out? How do you envision?
Yeah, most buildings like this today are key fobs. Yes, they would probably be self-closing, they're not fire doors per se, but we'd probably have them self-closing, certainly locks, and key fobs is kind of the way to go these days with buildings like this.
Last question I have for you is regarding lighting, exterior lighting, and I don't, I don't see detail on your plans or on the rendering, but on the Panone plans, it looks like there's facade lights being proposed around the exterior of the building. Am I reading that right? There looks like quite a few of them. Is that, it looks like a building-mounted facade light, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine...
Well, we do propose lighting, but, I'm sorry, it wasn't intended to go around. We would have, we would need a light over each door, that's the exit doors on the east and west. We would have lighting at the entrance, but in this case, we have a porch and we have a covered deck. I imagine most of the lighting would be in the soffits of those.
So you would agree to a condition that any exterior building-mounted lighting would be just for code purposes, code compliance purposes?
Oh, and function.
Or under a canopy?
Yes.
You know, down.
That is correct. We don't have decorative lighting on.
There's not going to be anything on the building itself?
Correct.
Okay.
Except the exit lights.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill.
I'm actually good, Bill had answered the question on security. So how does the, they get the mail and stuff inside, then?
Well, we'd have, we haven't picked out exact, you know, what kind of mail, but it would be a mailbox that's...
No, but can the mail, you have a place for packages and the mail thing inside?
Yeah, we'd be, we'd have it inside, we have...
How would the mail person get inside?
Probably have a through wall. He doesn't have to come in to do it. They can open it from the back, but he puts it in the front. We also would have a package room that would have a door from the inside and a door from the porch, from the outside.
Okay, so they wouldn't sit outside all day and stuff like that?
Who's the, oh, the packages, no, we don't want that, no. We'd want them under lock and key or fob, so that people will pick them up themselves when they're ready, when they're home.
Members of the public, you had a question? Please come on up. Just, I need your name, name and address.
My name's Yan Ho Huang, H-U-A-N-G, my last name. I have some question for you.
Okay, no problem.
Stove, for the stove, is that gas stove or electric stove, an oven?
We haven't got that far, but we figure it would be a gas stove in each of the, there would be a stove in each apartment.
And for heating, what kind of heating? Heat pump or...
Be a heat pump system, it would be, it would be both cooling and heat.
That's heat pump.
Yeah, heat pump, yep.
Do you consider use a solar panel? You know, that was substituted by a...
We would, we would love to use solar panels, something that I actually am a lead professional who loves solar, feels we should be using more solar than we are in this world, but that will be looked into as far as, yes, you are, you have a good, it was nice to see all your solar panels up there, thank you. We would love to do that, we haven't, until this approval, you know, until it's going, we will certainly look into that. We do have some south orientation of the pitch, so it could work for solar, and there aren't too many adult trees, so I think we could, and Visions and Pathways would love for Bridge House to have some solar as well.
You can see, do we have enough smart detector and also carbon more outside?
Absolutely, by code, we need that, yes. Thank you.
Please come forward.
On the ground floor, and I looked at the application some time ago, so I don't know whether there are any changes, when I looked at it, it's two offices, a conference room, closets, storage room, two bathrooms, elevator access, laundry room, kitchenette, and activity room. Now, by changing the nomenclature, you were able to take this out of the FAR.
Correct.
But it's still, in addition to 4,410 square feet of a massive building and a fully-used commercial use in the lower level. It's a little disingenuous.
I would, you're absolutely correct in everything you said, I would, except I would, I'd take a little exception of commercial use, because it really isn't, it's all for the residents.
What's an office used for?
An office might be a social worker coming once a week, once a month.
A conference room. This is office space, this is commercial space on the lower level.
It's really not intended for that, and you're right.
Used that way, and as this project grows, you already have two in the neighborhood, this is the third, I can see this used quite a bit.
Perhaps the board puts limits on that, and Mr. Walker wants to discuss that.
Chairman, and Mr. Lindell, I believe that the condition that I had raised, the same issue, and we, I think it was agreeable to the applicant, that we basically said that there's a condition that that commercial space, as you couched it, will only be used in connection with the residential, so it'll be practically amenity space for the residents, it'll be, those rooms will only be used by the residents, so no outside commercial, because it just opens up a can of worms for that parking and for traffic generation. It's not a separate use, it's not a separate office space, you can't rent it out to anybody, it's just used for the residents, basically as their common areas.
His staff here, they didn't ask for conference room, they didn't put it in the plan unless it was going to be used.
And we've put the limitations on them, and hopefully they will, if they are approved, they will abide by that. We did hear testimony from operations that, about staffing, that there will be basically one staff member on call, and then one basically maintenance person, so if they go in violation of that, then that's, you know...
They'll be back here.
They're coming back here if they violate that, so we're hoping that those stipulations will help to control it, because we have the same concerns.
All right, thank you.
Just to clarify, that's for use by the residents and for services to be provided to the residents, right? So it's not, the social workers and people coming in can be in there, we're not limiting it to the residents only, right?
No, but I just, I want to caution that it would not be used for, like, day-to-day office...
Yes, of course, but I did, but there could be people in there...
Absolutely, if they have...
That aren't residents providing them services.
Correct, and so if they wanted to come in and do some...
For benefit of the...
For benefit of, yeah, I just want to make sure.
But it's not going to be a...
Got it.
A usual, you know, nine-to-five thing where that's being used for, by an employee.
Exactly, yep.
Absolutely won't be.
Please, come on forward.
Ronald Picado, 12 Third Avenue, right next to the building proposed. So my house is 806 square feet, and this building is going to be 5,000 square feet, from what I'm hearing, so it's five times the size of my house, just to keep that in as the mass, five times, more than five times the size of my house. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one, is there a generator planned for this building? You have an elevator, right? So what happens in the event that power goes out?
Buildings like this, we generally do not, I mean, if they want, if we want to put a generator, we could, but it's not, it's not needed per any code, like medical would be, or...
Just...
It's not necessary.
All right. We're approaching 10 o'clock, is that the completion of your testimony?
We just have our question planned.
Just in terms of this witness?
Oh, this witness?
Yeah, yeah, we, we're going to wrap this up, you know, it's 10 o'clock, we don't have a fire marshal letter, you know, to get to a vote, I still think there's some outstanding items here. I just want to make sure that this witness is completed, members of the public had a chance to question him. Yeah, it's 10 o'clock, so we have available to you for our next meeting date, May 13th, does that work with you? There's no after Starbucks.
No.
Right, yeah, yeah, there's no...
Paul Miller is almost done.
So he's about an hour, you think? No, we need testimony on the record, not just questions.
This is, this is too important, I think, to do abbreviated and try and rush this through, and I don't want you to rush your testimony, I'm just trying to get a feel because April, we could do this after Starbucks on March 11th, but that's a complete new site plan. We could go the night of April 8th, we have Paul Miller, which has gone fairly smoothly.
I think they only have one witness.
They have one witness left as well. So I'll leave it up to you. May 13th, you can have the whole night, which doesn't sound like you'll need, or April 8th, you could go after Paul Miller, they have one witness.
My client is saying they want to get moving on this project.
Okay. Well, you had a chance in 2012 to get moving on this project.
I get that.
Yeah.
April 8th, okay.
All right, so we're going to push this, the rest of this testimony to 7:00 PM, April 8th, in this room. What are we going to do about notice?
So for the, for the members of the public, it's being continued to April 8th in this room at 7:00 PM, there'll be no further notices from the applicant, okay? So you have to remember or call Nancy.
Okay.
So I'll stipulate to any appropriate time for decision. Yeah, why don't we go out, I don't know where you are timewise, but why don't we go out through, through the first meeting in May? Is that 13th, the first, May 13th?
May 13th, yes. All right, and our next meeting is going to be February 25th, in this room, we're going to hear the JCC case and St. Berners as well. So with that, could I get a motion to adjourn?
I move.
All right, Mr. Widley and Mr. Bonjor, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Great job.